If I could have your attention, please. Thank you very much. I'd like to welcome you to our City Council meeting this August the 11th, 2022. In the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. If you desire to be recognized by the chair, please fill out a request form and present it to the city clerk present here in council chambers. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. Thank you for participating in your city government. We ask that you please silence all electronic devices. With that, I will call this council meeting to order. I'd like to ask that we all please stand for the invocation. We'd like to welcome Pastor Delbert Rogers from Champion Baptist Church, who will come and lead us on our invocation. Please remain standing after he concludes for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Let us pray. To Heavenly Father, as we gather here tonight and as council meets, we would invoke your blessing as they've asked us to come and then invoke the blessing of God. In order to have that, we ask that Lord of Business would be conducted in a businesslike, orderly, proper manner. We do ask for your wisdom for each one of the council members. We ask most of all that we'd all seek to honor the Lord Jesus Christ in our comments and, Lord, in the way we conduct ourselves. Our blessed this time, we do ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Roberts.
Please join me in the pledge. My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Madam Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Mayor Blackwell.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Here.
Councilmember Urban.
Here.
Councilmember Askew.
Here.
Councilmember Trace.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any items to update on our agenda?
No, Mayor, I have no items to update or change.
Thank you very much. And that brings us to our first presentation of Employee of the Month by Jason Miller. Is that correct?
Do you want to start it off? All right. Haven't got to do one of these in a long time. I'd like to invite David Miller up, Lieutenant David Miller, from the Fire Department. Lieutenant David Miller was nominated for Employee of the Month by one of our firefighters. Recently, and as everybody's seen on Facebook through the social media platforms, David was inspirational and him and his wife came up with a brilliant idea to provide fire prevention education to our children in the community, as well as another resource to advance literacy. As one of his firefighters said, "David Miller's outstanding professionalism, knowledge, and leadership aided in the measurable ability to identify a problem in the St. Cloud area." He's orchestrated multiple vendors to create a vision of providing free children's books on fire safety and other appropriate activities, which has captivated kids and increased literacy in the St. Cloud area. With five Fire Pal boxes strategically placed around the city, most congested foot traffic areas, including parks out in front in the VFW and the lakefront, hundreds, if not thousands of children have been able to enjoy both a safe message of fire prevention, as well as the ability to enhance their literacy. I can't read his writing. The local press has recognized David Miller. He has formed a 501(c) called Fire Pals to help move this effort forward. David reflects great credit upon himself, our department, and in this endeavor that he's brought forth to the children. On a different note, David's been with us now for eight and a half, eight years, eight and a half years? He was identified early on as a leader. He was one of our youngest promotees to lieutenant, and I fully expect him one day to be the chief of this department.
Just give you a little story about what kind of prompted the Fire Pals box that you guys see popping up all over town. It honestly became an idea where we just, me and my wife, were driving to dinner, and then we saw this little library box. I was like, wouldn't it be cool if it was painted to look like a fire station, right? And then we put fire safety materials in there. It became a really cool idea after that, and then we just kind of steamrolled from there. And quite a few, actually, individuals in the room have been part of the project and are continuing to be huge community leaders for the project. So it was just a thing that we decided was a cool idea, and it just, we decided to share it with the community, and the community thought so, too. So now it's kind of taken on a life of its own. So it's pretty cool to be recognized for it. Wasn't anything that was expected, but still very cool to be recognized for something in its nature. But yeah, just want to thank you, you guys, for the recognition, and that's all I have to say. You guys have a good rest of your evening. Thank you.
One more little thing. If you have any children appropriate books that you'd like to drop off, we do accept the donations at FireStation 31. And as David mentioned, there's lots of community partners out there who help sponsor the boxes, and we appreciate them, too. Thank you.
I believe you're going to turn the... Do we have a team recognition? That got added to the... No, that's a mistake, I think. We certainly appreciate Mr. Miller's commitment to the city and certainly to families in making a difference, especially to our kids. At this time, we have the presentation by Mary Emma Batchelder regarding updated city street signage.
Good evening, council. Several weeks ago, council had asked us to look into redesigning our city street signs to incorporate our new branding. So we worked with Evoke, the company that did our logo for us, and have a couple of different options to show for you tonight. So if you'll bear with me, we had some mockups there. We have this one. Of course, it features our Sand Hill crane. Thanks, I think. And this one is just a different version of the Sand Hill crane.
Okay. Why don't you turn that around? I also think I can see it.
There we go. She makes a lovely data.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. So we wanted to just get feedback from council and some direction, whether you like them, which one you prefer, and then we can go forth and implement. In speaking with Public Works, they have a seven-year program to recycle street signs. So the thought is, like we've done with a lot of the other rebranding things, as it's time to replace them, we would update, so.
Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. This is something that I had brought forward because I've seen it in other communities. I think it's a nice way to tie in. One of the other ideas that I had brought forward was thinking about maybe a different color, like was there any consideration to, instead of a green sign?
We can, I probably shouldn't speak out of turn. Kevin, can we make them any color we want?
Hi. Kevin Palblinger, interim Public Works Director. Yeah, like I said, because right now our standard is green and white. And so, like I said, so there is an array of different kinds of areas there that we could use. And so some are a little more expensive than others just because of the pigments and that sort of stuff. But like I said, but if it's the direction of the council, because right now we do a white and blue sign for private roads that are being posted right now. So I say, yeah, we could do different colors, just have to get different backing.
By pirate, you mean non-maintained?
Yes. Yes, ma'am. Like I said, yeah, there are...
Do we have pirates?
No, private, private road, sorry. I'm sorry.
Yeah, because I had brought that up, that right now green indicates, just to people that are looking at that, like it's a city or county maintained road, and the blue indicates that it's a non-maintained road. You know, so I was saying, maybe, when we brought this up, I said, well, maybe blue isn't the best choice, you know? But I don't, I mean, I don't know. But I like the direction that we're going. And is it lowercase letters? Because I thought the signs were all uppercase now.
We were just trying to just mock something up.
We're just looking at the graphic. Just look at the graphic.
Focus on the birds.
Yeah, yeah. I personally like the second one that's on the floor better, but let the council members think.
All right. We got Mary Emma or Kevin. Do we have a consensus?
Councilwoman Askew.
Being a bird guy, that looks like a Sand Hill crane, the one Kevin's holding.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, Mayor, can I ask one more thing?
Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman Matheny.
Whenever we decide, you know, if we're going to change it, then that would be required in every new development that comes in, too, right? Not just rotating out the old stock, is that every new development that comes in would...
Yeah, so whatever society, I would change the standard detail to include, include it in there. Like I said, because I actually have both these in CAD. I had to kind of put them in there to be able to work into this. So I said, so I do have both these versions in AutoCAD right now.
Okay. Perfect.
Awesome. Well, I like the sign you're holding in your hands now better, and I like the color green, and I think it matches certainly what we already have. Any other comment? What else do you have for us?
That is all I have. Thank you for your feedback.
All right. Thank you very much.
I think we got the bird.
Are you wanting us to...
I think we need to talk a little bit about color, just City Manager.
Yes, sir.
I liked a little bit more color in it. I like green, one of my favorite colors. But like I said, we did spend a lot of money on the rebranding, and it's got the multicolor. I think we should try to integrate some different colors in there if we could.
I just want people to remember, every color you see here is a different kind of sheeting. So every time you add a color, because we do not have ways to print, we have to use sheeting for the entire area. So every time you change a color, it's another layer of sheeting that has to go onto the signs. So please don't get too crazy, because like I said, my guys do have to do this by hand. And so I said, so every time you change a color, because right now, like I said, these are two different layers of sheeting on this. So if you add another color to it, it will add another layer of sheeting that we have to do to it also. And so I said, so if we can try to not add too many different colors to it, like I said, we don't, like I said, that would just be a request, just because like my guys have to do a lot of stuff with this.
How many colors were you anticipating, Mr....
I personally like blue, but I don't know if that would cause an issue.
I'm with the deputy mayor.
Yeah. I don't know, and I know, like, on 192 in New York, that sign's blue, I believe, and the poles are blue? Or is it just the poles?
I don't, I'm pretty sure that, like, I really don't remember. I think the signs are green, but that's just from my memory, and it's not the best it used to be.
Yeah. I like blue, because it would be something different and kind of stand out, but I don't want to cause problems with, like, knowing maintenance limits. I don't, I don't know how many non-maintained roads there are anymore.
Well, like I said, yeah, because we have some of them, like I said, but right now the city standard is to have a white background with blue lettering on it. So it's exactly the opposite of what the county has. So like I said, so, I mean, so if we did a blue background with white lettering, that would be different from our private signs that are currently out there.
Okay. Are we loading?
So what else do you need from us, then?
Consensus, I think.
Yes, please.
Just looking for consensus.
You guys care?
No, not too much. Looks nice.
Mr. Urban? Make a decision, man.
Would it be too much work to have the bird be a separate color, kind of like on our logo? It's, the bird is orange, have the bird be orange and the rest...
I think it'd be hard to see.
Yeah.
Like I said, yeah, like I said, every time you add a color, it's another layer that we have to, we have to add to it, because we do not have the technology, because we don't have the technology to print stuff. Like I said, these are all...
Can you get the City Manager, work on the blue, and bring it back one more time and let us look at the blue? So we've got something to compare it to.
And we have consensus that this is the version of the bird. Okay, great.
So we'll bring both these back, one in green and one in blue, and then we'll see if, we might even try to add a little different color in there, if that's the direction, so we take a look at it.
All right.
This is the version we'll bring back.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Phew, all these hard decisions. At this time, we have a presentation regarding an update on the City Council on the Entertainment District after six months of its adoption by Abysmal.
Good evening, council. Abysmal Abreu, City Manager's office. All righty. So I'm back here six months later just to provide the council an update on the Entertainment District after its adoption in 2018 and its amendment in 2021 to allow for outdoor alcohol consumption and the creation of the Entertainment District permit. So what have we done in the past six months? City staff put together the outdoor alcohol sales affidavit for businesses looking to participate in the program and be able to serve drinks for outdoor consumption. This was shared through the community with the help of Main Street and social media avenues. So far, only five businesses have registered with the city, and it is a required, a requirement to register to be able to serve alcohol due to the fact of, to make sure that the businesses are complying with the regulations. And it's totally free of charge. We just ask businesses to sign the affidavit to make sure that they know the rules. The city also created the Entertainment District Event Permit and its fees. So far, only one, we have one signature event in the downtown reoccurring, which is the monthly market. We're hoping that that will pick up soon, and we have more events downtown as well. During the process of the amendment, we also discussed with the community, and one of the issues that was brought forward mostly was the amount of litter that this program could potentially create. So to address that, the city put together the steps Downtown Cleanup Program. What this program is, is consistent of city staff, city departments volunteering, city staff to weekly go out and pick up trash in the downtown, so pretty much donate their time. I have some statistics for you. So far, as of yesterday, there's a total of 907 pounds of litter that have been picked up and a total of 260 hours has been volunteered as of yesterday by city staff.
Wow.
And in my opinion, it's going tremendously well. And as you can see, I'm really happy in this picture with our solid waste superintendent. And I want to note that this picture was actually taken the Monday after Super Bowl Sunday. So just imagine, I was out there bright and early, picking up, making sure that there's no trash out. The city also established the Entertainment District webpage in our website. That website pretty much contains everything that you need to know when it comes to the Entertainment District boundaries, to-dos, and the rules. It's been shared through social as well and shared with our partners, our community partners. I also would like to note that without the help of our community partners, this program was not going to be possible. So I want to give a shout out to Main Street and the labor that it done on behalf of the city to make sure that this is a successful program. So they have taken over the duties of grouping and putting together the program for the downtown businesses to make sure that they're informed and that they have the requirements that they need to meet to be able to participate. One of them is the Registered Cup stickers for the businesses to be able to serve outdoor alcohol. So far, they have been a total of 11 rolls distributed for 5,500 total stickers to nine alcohol-serving businesses. So you heard me earlier say, there's been five registered businesses in the city, but yet nine have picked up rolls. So we have to coordinate and make sure that those other four businesses that haven't registered come into the city and do so. So we're working with them for that. Main Street also has taken the duties of distributing signage for the participating and non-participating businesses throughout downtown, and those signs contain the maps and the rules of the Entertainment District. So we want to thank them for that as well. Another contentious item when we were going through this process was, oh, crime might increase in the downtown because of this. And I just wanted to show some data. From January to June in 2021, before this program went into effect, and 2022, when the six-month period started. And as you can see by the data, there's no, there hasn't been a significant statistical increase in any of the crime statistics downtown. It's just a difference of three. So there hasn't been anything significant of concern for the CRA officers in downtown because of this program.
Very good.
Now, moving forward, you saw Mary Emma before me show some pictures, show and tell how she likes to call it, from the street signage. We want to do the same in the downtown as well. We want to make sure that we design wayfinding signage to create a character so that people, when they come in, they see, hey, we're in a different zone of the city. So we want to be working on that with the help of city staff to put together that sense of place for the downtown. We also are looking forward to the finalization of the Downtown Rivalization Phase Two Project. Once done, we expect that to help the downtown businesses as well, and this program to really take off the ground. And we're also working with promotional opportunities with not only community partners in the city, but also in the region, to be able to spread the word that we have this program here available for visitors and the residents of St. Clouds. That way, we can attract more influx of visitors. That's all I have for you today or this evening. And I would also would like to provide our Main Street Director, Paula Stark, some, an opportunity to address you as well, so she has more additional information.
Hi, Paula Stark, Executive Director of St. Cloud Main Street. I'm putting Abby in. I get to call him Abby. He doesn't like that, but he gets called Abby. I'm just here because you all are aware that as a Main Street program, we're required to go to a state conference every year. And so just a week or so ago, we came back from state conference, and at the conference, we have an annual awards banquet through the Secretary of State. So with that, Main Street brought home the Outstanding Florida Main Street Economic Restructuring Program or Project, and it is for the Entertainment District and the collaboration between the city and Main Street to put this together. So I'm bringing this forward so that you can all look at it. Abby can touch it. And then I'm going to make sure that it's in my office, so he has to come look at it. So I just wanted you all to know that we did get recognized for pulling that together, because it took us a little bit of time, you know, with you all talking about it and us putting it together with the merchants. So it is recognized as an economic driver. So thank you all for helping out with that, and we hope that it continues to be successful for downtown.
Well, we're certainly grateful for all the work that you have done and Main Street has done, and we also want to thank Abysmal for his leadership in this report and all the volunteers that have volunteered to pick up trash, and it sounds like something maybe the council needs to help volunteer to do. Councilwoman Matheny.
Thank you. I echo all of the mayor's sentiments. I'm so glad it's been very successful. I know there was some concerns when we got it into place, but it sounds like you're nailing it. But I just wanted to ask you, on the wayfinding signage that's mentioned in here, does it include telling people where the parking opportunities are? I think there's a wayfinding package going on for parking, and then I'm hearing a wayfinding, are they all, is it all one project, or is there multiple wayfinding projects going on?
I just highlighted the specifics, just for signage, like the Entertainment District boundaries, but yeah, definitely there will be a component that goes parking, yes.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other input? Not? Thank you very much. Are you through? The next portion of our agenda is the Citizens Forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item out on the agenda is provided this opportunity to address the City Council. Each person is requested to complete a signing form to be provided to the residing officer prior to or as soon as is practical thereafter the person addresses the council. When you come forward, please state your name and address for the record, and we will ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. The first person that's requested to speak is Camille Levy Levy. Oh, there you are.
Good evening. Camille Levy, 515 Neptune Bay Circle, St. Cloud. And, come on up, Marvin. I am here this evening to introduce to you the President of the St. Cloud Women's Club Heritage Museum, and that's Marvin Robinson. And I am now serving as the Volunteer Coordinator, Curator for the St. Cloud Women's Club Heritage Museum. We are here tonight to say a warm and heartfelt thank you to city staff, to you as the council for all the hard work that went into refitting, retrofitting the museum and the women's club. It was a long process. I know Olive Hornig, who was our longtime curator, worked very hard. Well, it's done. We are, most of the boxes are unpacked. We are excited to, we're closed in August, but we're excited to be reopening in September with a totally new look. You have on your, on the dais, a flyer regarding an event that is occurring on September 24th. This was done in conjunction with the Orlando Foundation for Architecture, and it actually highlights Isabel Roberts, who designed the building and many buildings in downtown St. Cloud in the early part of the century. Isabel was a resident of St. Cloud. So the details are on the flyer. We hope that you will attend. I've been volunteering at the museum for the two years that I've been here, and let me tell you, I've learned some interesting things. Did you know that the first sidewalks were a project of the women's club? They assessed each woman a bag of cement to provide to the city to pave the sidewalks. That was in 1910, and they thought that the veterans should do the same thing. In addition, did you know that in 1939, our seaport was officially decided on, way back then? So lots of good nuggets of history of St. Cloud. We are a treasure in St. Cloud. We invite you to come and visit. We have visitors coming from all over the world. Our St. Cloud residents need to see the great opportunities that our history has provided us here in St. Cloud. So come on down and come visit us for the film. Thank you so much. Thank you again for your support in making all of this happen.
And we certainly appreciate all that you ladies have done down at the museum. I dropped by, and it's had an amazing facelift. It looks so much incredibly different and nice now. Everything is so organized, and we appreciate all the sweat and labor that you have put into making it so nice, and something that I encourage everyone to check out. And so we look forward to this film coming up on September 24th at 2:00 p.m.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. 3894 Wind Dancer Circle, St. Cloud. Tonight, I'd like to discuss the St. Cloud Aquatic Team. I have two young ladies that are participants for about the last year on this aquatic team, and swimming is a fantastic organization that you can be part of. Last evening, we had a very, very passionate parent meeting with the board, and it came out that the city has invoked its right to not review the contract with the St. Cloud Aquatic Team. So I just have a couple of quick questions, and would like to see if the city has some answers to these questions. The first being, what specifics does, can the city talk about on why they've chosen not to renew this contract? Over the last 15 years or so, the relationship has been, from my understanding, pretty well with the city. And I'd just like to try to understand what the purpose of this was. And two, since we already pushed this action out, and it looks like it's going to occur, has the city came up with an actionable plan to move the displaced swimmers and provide opportunity... opportunity for them to still swim? Because as of October 15th, the young ladies and men of this team will have no place to swim. And just trying to get some answers. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Frost. Mr. Sturgeon, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, Mr. Frost, good evening. I want to let you know that that time that was available for scats is still on the books. We're going to have one of our employees who's a coach, Mr. TJ Walters, will be there to coach them. Those children are still welcome to come and swim during that swim period with a certified coach.
Absolutely outstanding, and I appreciate that. And is it, is it the intent of the city to maintain that program, or are we looking potentially for new leadership to come in and establish something that has a more foundation of integrity?
Yes, sir.
Copy that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. If you have any further questions, I encourage you to make an appointment with the city manager. He'll be glad to sure meet with you and follow up on your concerns.
Thanks, David, appreciate it, sir.
Edgar Henson? One more call. Edgar Henson? If not, he is not here. Would anyone else like to speak during the Citizens Forum? Please step forward, state your name and address, please, and then turn in a form, please.
Richard Estle. I own 1018 Pennsylvania Avenue. I have two businesses located on Pennsylvania Avenue, and I want to speak for just a moment regarding the Entertainment District. By and large, I think it's been very successful. I know we're still, still having some challenges with people bringing drinks from other establishments. This is very detrimental to us if we can't stop it. If we happen to, and I have had alcohol, beverage, and tobacco come into my business at 8:30 at night on a Friday night, and if there's something in the establishment that is not mine, that is not on our records, that we didn't serve, they'll shut us down. I don't know what the exact solution is. I can put more staff on, but it's a significant financial burden for us to do that. I've requested some additional signage at different times. We need to have some signage posted around reminding folks that they cannot bring drinks in from other establishments. That's any alcohol-serving establishment. So everybody may be dealing with the same things. I know Breeze's Express, they have challenges with their patio, preventing people from coming in from one of the other establishments. By and large, believe it or not, I'm a huge supporter of this. I just want to, I just wanted to state for the record, I think there's a few details we still need to polish up a little. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Sturgeon, is that something you can?
Yes, sir, I'll have Mr. Abreu get with those owners and see what we can do to resolve that issue.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Trevor.
Thank you, Richard. Would anyone else like to speak to the Councilor for the Citizens Forum? If not, we'll move to our consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contains a long list of items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now is the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the City Council wish to speak on a consent item, they will have the same opportunity. First of all, I would like to ask the council, are there any items on the consent agenda that you're wanting to address? If not, then we'll, Councilmember Matheny?
I'd like to pull Zebra for discussion.
Tell me what the judge said again?
Z.
Z.
Zebra.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. If not, we'll go to item Z. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. So I'm a huge supporter of Olay. Those of you that have been up here on council know that I've always supported it and fought for it against when it hasn't been such an Olay-positive board. I did have a conversation with Mr. New Street. I see Mr. New Street over here in the crowd, and we talked about kind of the changes and proposed increases in fees for this upcoming year to go from $20,000 to $40,000 contribution from the City of St. Cloud. I guess I don't feel comfortable with that increase. Most of, in my conversation with Mr. New Street, most of the money is going towards a new federal lobbyist, and the federal lobbyist's agenda is school-related, which I'll agree, you know, when the schools succeed, we all succeed, you know, and it's all a good thing. But I also know we have our own federal lobbyists that we're paying for separately, so I just kind of want to talk to the council. I'm, I'm for moving this forward, but I'm just not in support of the fee increase.
Mr. New Street, if you'd like to speak to this item, I'll give you that opportunity to do so.
John New Street, 1425 East Vine Street, Kissimmee. Thank you. This, this comes as a result of a change at Olay, where we've traditionally had three state lobbyists to supplement the work of the lobby teams hired by each of the governmental entities here in Osceola County. We've reduced that to one state lobbyist and one federal lobbyist to take on the growing need and opportunities from the federal level, as we discussed. So, so yeah, the ask is 40. To accommodate some of that, it's important to note, since 2001, the accomplishments which were shared with you amount to a tremendous ROI from Olay's work over the years in that there's not been a penny raised from the initial assessment on the partners since 2001. And so part of this is kind of accommodating some of that growth and preparing for the addition of this federal lobbyist, including the opportunity to travel together to Washington, DC to reinforce the agenda that you all set, so.
Councilmember Matheny, would you like to speak to that?
I guess a follow-up question, and I don't know the answer to this. So it's a dangerous question to ask, I suppose. Are all entities asked for an increase, or is it just us?
Just you at this time, yes.
Mr. Sturgeon, would you like to give us your opinion on your support?
Well, yes, Mayor, I've actually struggled with this too. As you know, I'm the Chair of the Olay Board this year, and like I said, my, my reservation is that big of an increase, but I do think we need to increase. It's been since 2001. We've done some really good work there, and there's things that happen in the other entities that do benefit the City of St. Cloud. So if I could, if you agree, Deputy Mayor, can we make that $30,000? Would that be acceptable to Deputy Mayor and the rest of the council?
What is the pleasure of the council?
I mean?
Councilmember Trace?
So to add on another wrinkle with this, I don't think it should be a one-year contract. I think these things need to be three or five years out to where they can budget and plan for some of this. Because it's, we adopt our budget in October, and then like session starts three months later, you have to already have all your game plan in place, you have to probably already start meeting in October, November, December to get some of the strategy out to, at least on the state side. And you can't really do that if you, you know, prove it right in October and we're having to hit the ground running. So I think this should be a longer-term thing. On the fee, are we taking some, how are we allocating this out in our lobbying budget? Is there money coming off of other areas, or is this?
Not in the, specifically in the lobbying budget, but under the council's budget. We removed some things. For example, we had $250,000 for professional services, so we reduced that to 150. So that's why you saw in the budget workshop that there was a net no increase, but then we moved some money around.
And then, this is the first I'm hearing of the actual lobbying strategy for, for Olay, so is it just for the, is the, is the singular item going for something for the school district this year, or is it kind of the list of top three items and next three items kind of thing as we do on the state side?
So point, point of clarification on the ask coming to St. Cloud is you pay the least amount, and just a marginal increase will allow for the opportunity we're seeking. To your question, going from three lobbyists to one lobbyist allows for more accountability in that. It also allows for better coordination, so bringing them in early in the process to help you decide your opportunities and your priorities. So while I administrate, I don't pay, I don't get paid a salary. Every penny into this goes into the effort that benefits you and your citizens. So, so this just allows us to say, with one lobbyist at each level, talking to you sooner in the process, giving you those ideas and opportunities that you might seize, and then I'm just the middleman. You give those to your manager, and manager brings it into the room, and then I hand it to the lobbyists. I serve a very simple purpose in all this.
And did all of the other entities approve the, that change to a singular state and a singular federal lobbyist?
Yeah, well, you're the second to review this in the public forum, and so there's tentative agreement going in. The school board has approved it, and it'll be on the City of Kissimmee and County agendas in the near future.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
I'll make a motion.
I, excuse me, Deputy Mayor, I just want to, do we want to entertain a longer?
Yeah, that's what I'm.
Contract, okay, thank you, ma'am.
So I'll make a motion to approve the Olay contract for three years to help with planning, because I'm sure that is a struggle like Mr. Trace brought up. And then I, it's a $30,000 number for me.
Is this a problem, Mr.?
Wait till you get a second, and then we can talk.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second from Councilmember Askew.
And just some history here, the reason why these, this contract was done on an annual basis, it required an annual appropriation by the council. I, I'm okay with the motion that's being there, but the agreement does not have a appropriation provision in it, which is typically, you see in a contract like that, that extends longer than one year. In other words, it could be a three-year contract, but it would still be subject to an annual budget appropriation by the, by the sitting council member at the time. So I would be, I'm okay with that motion, but I think that that language would have to be added to the contract, just so that in the event that one of the parties did not want to appropriate the budget money one year, they'd be able to get out of the contract.
I'm okay with that.
I'm not an attorney.
Okay.
I think, I think the other entity, if the contract is long, I guess what I was saying, if the contract is longer than a one-year, I think the other, the other entities are going to want to have that ability to do it on an annual appropriation basis for the money. So it just comes down to one budget item where the council would have to appropriate the money every year, as well as the school board, as well as the City Kissimmee and the county, and they would all have to do the same thing.
Can we say, as long as Olay is in existence with all the parties included, it's a three-year renewal?
I think you're okay with this.
I mean, can we?
I think if you're going to go to three years, I think most entities will agree that that, that language is fine. It's pretty typical for those kind of contracts. And I'm happy to provide Mr. New Street some language that we could add and talk to.
Councilmember Trace?
Okay, because my thought is, if you don't have to appropriate every year, then it kind of negates the whole fact of doing a three-year agreement.
Well, with the exception of it just becomes part of your budget process, and you don't have to have the agreement back. So, but what happened is when you approve your budget in September of every year with the line, with this included, then it automatically moves forward. It only goes away if you don't appropriate the money.
Okay.
And the contract stays in place for those three-year period.
Okay, do we have any other discussion? Madam Clerk, will you call the room, please?
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, John. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to an item on the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion for the adoption of the consent agenda. Oh, are you going to speak? Sure, come.
Good evening, council.
What consent item are you going to speak to?
Item X.
Okay. Is that your name and address for the record?
My name is Garrett Stockdale. I'm currently a detective for the Police Department. I have over 20 years with the city. Prior to being a detective in law enforcement, I was with Environmental Utilities. I'm also the sitting president for the union, Lodge 180. Just want to thank you guys for all your hard work and your approval on, on the stuff that we're moving forward. We've made agreements and talked with city administration, PD administration, on the items that we're moving forward with, and with the agreement that moving forward with a step plan would be beneficial to the city for various reasons, as we're having issues with retention and hiring on new officers and then them going to other agencies. Over the last two to three years, we've lost now, I think today, Officer Augustine makes 11. So that, that's a lot of money when you start adding up. All these new officers, we're training up, bringing on board, and then they're leaving. So just want to say thank you for that. I think it'll improve retention and promotion of better qualified candidates for us. And with that said, on a personal note, I just think that Veronica Miller would be our only choice for city manager, as we promote retention of good employees rather than spending tens of thousands of dollars for a committee to bring on somebody from outside. I think we could invest in ourselves and that'd be good for us.
Thanks, sir. Would anyone else like to speak to the consent agenda? Yes, sir.
Can I ask you a question? Are you saying that personally, or are you saying that that's coming from the union?
That's coming personally.
Okay.
That's a personal statement.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. Omar Lopez, 4870 Nathan Hill Boulevard. I'm also speaking on behalf of St. Cloud Firefighters Local 4153 and John Jones, our union president. To back up Mr. Garrett here, we've had a step plan now for three contracts with the city, and I have to echo his, his vision on this. It has helped us immensely in retaining firefighters. Our city is growing. It continues to grow. Calls for service increase. We need to retain experienced police officers within our city. Our police chief also has a vision for this, and my understanding is he is in agreement as well. And we need to keep up with the growth in the city and retain those experienced police officers. This will help us immensely. We have a very close working relationship with our police officers out on, on the streets, and we like to keep, we like to continue seeing some of our experienced police officers stay with us. It's a, it's a, that's a very close relationship, and we back each other up in, from a safety standpoint. So I do hope that you support their contract and approve it today. It is something that is needed as well. And as a resident, since Mr. Garrett brought it up, I do support Veronica Miller for city manager. Now, we need to, we need her.
I'm sorry, we need to stay on the issue, please.
Yeah, no problem. But I just wanted to mention, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thanks, sir. Would anyone else like to speak to this consent agenda? If not, I'll go back and entertain a motion for the adoption of the consent.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Askew or Trace, Councilmember Trace, and a second from Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, and it is approved. That brings us to the next portion of tonight's meeting, which is public hearings. Madam Clerk, will you please read item number one?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2022-18, an ordinance of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, establishing on the proposed property known as Center Lake Ranch West and further described herein, and recognizing the Center Lake Ranch West Community Development District created and chartered by Uniform General Law, the Uniform Community Development District Act of Florida, Chapter 190, Florida Statute 2021, and hereafter acknowledging the Uniform District Charter expressed in Chapter 190, Florida Statutes, and confirmed by Section 189.0313, Florida Statutes, establishing the district on the property proposed in this petition and designation, and designating the initial members of District Board of Supervisors and designating the proposed land area within which the district may manage and finance its basic infrastructure, systems, facilities, services, improvements, and projects providing for separability and effective date.
Good evening. Dagmarin Segara, Planning Manager. The item in front of you is the Center Lake Ranch West Community Development District. It's approximately 385.77 acres in size, located at south of Starline Drive, north of Hackney Road, and south of Narcisse Road. As we discussed in the last commission, council meeting, staff is recommending approval of the CDD, a discussion from this board, requested from the applicant to bring a little bit more details in regards to what the enhancements of, that they will be provided. As an update to the slides, the additional clarifications into the enhancements to the property or to the project have been provided. They are proposing to enhance the passive recreational amenities, enhance the open space above and beyond the requirement of the Land Development Code, and enhance property buffer zones against residential, and also perimeter entry landscaping and buffer enhancements to include an eight-foot-high wall. to include an eight-foot-high wall along certain portions against residential and Starline. The applicant is here, he had, they have their own presentation that would like, that they would like to present to the board. It meets the strategic goals of growth management and infrastructure, and is, at the city council, it was a recommendation of approval with additional information, and in the, and tonight, staff recommends also approval of ordinance 2022-18. This concludes my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions. The applicant is here to answer any questions you may have as well.
This time we'll recognize the applicant, if he'd like to speak to this item.
All right, great. Well, thank you all. I'm Jay Earlywine again, with K.E. Law Group here on behalf of the petitioner, and thank you so much for entertaining and considering the petition. As Dag Marie said, we spoke last time about some of the advantages and benefits that the CDD would bring to the project, and she asked us to come back this time and talk a little bit about some of the enhancements that the CDD will, will bring to bear, so to speak. So, as you all remember, this is the 386-acre project, it's planned for 1,100-plus homes, and, you know, the infrastructure plan is, is over $45 million just for Center Lake Ranch West, which is sort of the first portion of a much larger development. And the CDD intends to finance a wide variety of improvements, stormwater improvements, utilities, roads, hardscape, landscape, irrigation, as well as some recreational amenities, too. In terms of the enhancements map, I think you all saw this in your materials last time, we've got a, a map there, it kind of shows where the enhancements are, and identifies them there on the right-hand side, and we'll go into a little bit more detail here in a second to talk about them. But I did want to show you the map, too, of the larger development, which I think you all are familiar with anyway, but Center Lake Ranch West is obviously over in the western side, and there's a much larger development planned for the future. In terms of the enhancements, I think the first thing worth pointing out is obviously the passive public park spaces. This is an item that I think the, you know, there's going to be over 23 acres of recreational area, over 107 acres or so of open space, and I believe that the city had proposed to maybe purchase and, and put a park in, but the CDD's going to do that instead, and we've got that 10-acre, it's a 10 and a third acre park that's planned with pavilions and, and overlook, it's going to overlook a pond, and it's got a dog park, and so it's a really nice feature that'll be owned and maintained by the CDD and open to the public, for public use. In addition to that, we have, let me make sure I've got my glasses on, I can see what I'm looking at here. So, we also have a number of multipurpose trails, there's over 13,000 linear feet of trail, so it's, it's miles of trail, and these are not your standard kind of sidewalks, they're 10-foot-wide paths going up Center Lake Ranch Boulevard, 12 Oaks Road, so it's, there's this, and of course, they also circle around some of the ponds and whatnot. But again, the city would build and maintain those improvements as well. And then there's enhanced perimeter and entry landscaping with, with buffer areas, as Dag Marie mentioned. We're planning on having, you know, landscape buffers will be 10 feet wide, there's a berman wall that together are about eight feet high, and, you know, the berm wall's going to include accent palms, as well as shrubs, every 100 feet or so, you see the numbers there, eight palm trees and six, six shrubs. This is well above what the city code requires, and I think it's over $2 million in, in value. You can see a diagram there, just kind of showing what they look like, and the, the entry feature and the landscaping. We talked a little bit about the, the right-of-way buffers, there's going to be right-of-way buffers that include the understory trees, as well as shrubs, cost over 1.5 million dollars. We, we talked a little bit about the open space. Actually, over 30% of the property is going to be open space, which is 10% more than what the, the city code requires, and I mentioned at outset that we were going to do the utilities and stormwater and all the rest of it. So that's, that's kind of the, some of the benefits. You can also see where, you know, this, this particular project is going to connect, obviously, eastward, and there's a school site plan, fire station plan, so all that stuff is in your development approvals for, for the project. I, I think, and here's our, our cost chart showing that the, the overall costs are over $45 million. And we're obviously happy to provide this information to you all, I know that's of, of interest to you. Osceola County asked for the same thing. I just wanted to provide sort of a, a context, you know, I've been doing CDD work for over 15 years, all across the state, from, you know, Jacksonville to the Panhandle, down to Miami and, and Collier County, and Osceola and St. Cloud, and maybe one other jurisdiction kind of asked for these enhancements table, but I just wanted to mention that most jurisdictions don't ask for that, and, and, you know, obviously they want to see what we're going to finance and what we're going to do, but, and I think it's, it's relevant information, but it's just a slice of kind of what the CDD is doing, so I wanted you all to be aware of that. When, you know, the Florida Legislature created Chapter 190 back in the 1980s, the idea was that it would be able to bring sort of an alternative to an HOA, and be able to deliver public infrastructure for residential mixed-use projects, and, and basically save everybody money, have a nice financing tool for residents going forward, and also provide a much better operation and maintenance entity. And I want you all to keep that kind of larger perspective, because, you know, when, when it comes to the project costs, the CDD obviously is going to be able to provide enhancements like this, but it also means there's more money in the deal to provide private amenities as well, and keep your home prices competitive. All of that stuff gets factored into the calculus, and you need to think about that, that there's other benefits beyond just what's in the enhancements. And I think the proof is, you know, when a homeowner approaches buying a home, and I know one of the questions was, hey, do people understand this? You know, they don't need to understand all the bells and whistles and advantages of CDD's and how they work, like we talked about at the last meeting. What the homeowner's going to look at is, they're going to look at the community, and they're going to look at the, the home itself, and then they're going to turn, they're going to look at their closing statement, and they're going to look at their monthly fees, and the CDD fee, and the HOA fee, and the mortgage is all on there. And so if, if it's worth it to them, after looking at the community and the home, they're going to buy the home, and if they're not, then they're not. But if they buy in, they're going to have the advantage of all of the different advantages the CDD has, and, and they're going to buy into a community that's going to be something that they, they value. So I guess the last point I would make is that, you know, this is a quintessential community development district project, it's got heavy public infrastructure, over $45 million. It's exactly the type of project that I think the Florida Legislature had in mind for Chapter 190. I really think it'd be a great benefit for the project. It helps us, I mean, this particular project has huge amenities planned for the, there's actually two clubhouses, two pools planned, it's got all the public infrastructure as well, and, and public recreational, so it's going to be a really nice community because of this CDD structure, and homeowners are going to be aware of it, because they're going to see it on their closing statement, just like they look at any other project, so. Happy to answer any questions, and we really appreciate your time today and your consideration of the petition.
If you'll stand by, we may have some questions for council in just a moment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sandy Simone?
Hello, is there any way you guys can go back and pull up his little map?
Can you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Sorry, Sandy Simone, 5465 Handsome Road, St. Cloud, Florida. Thank you. So, I thought it was a very impressive presentation last time I heard it and this time I heard it, so I'm going to talk really fast. You guys know me, I've been part of the Narcisse overlay for the last, last four years and longer, so's Betty, and I got to be honest, a lot of the credit that was just taken is because of the Narcisse overlay. We spent over four years going to meetings with Osceola County and commissioners, talking about birmingham and landscape, and not having zero lot lines and green space, and fencing and bike trails, and this was already approved when, and looked at when it was at Osceola County. Most of this was already approved when the City of St. Cloud accepted it and annexed it, and I'm all for that. And like I said, I'm just a little, all these enhancements are because of this company. I'm a little shocked by that, but what do I know, I'm a layperson. So here are my questions. I'm not really understanding why the City of St. Cloud would give away the potential revenue that this has. Again, I'm a layperson, CDD is brand-new to me. We just annexed this, how is this going to help the residents of the City of St. Cloud? Or even the people in Center Lake? Because I live in the middle of Center Lake Ranch, little area that's grayed out, that's where I live. I'm thinking about my property value. I agree with you, what you said last meeting, is, are people going to want to pay an extra two grand for a CDD? I had never heard of that until last meeting last month. What do I know? I'm thinking about marketing. When we're going to be competing in a year, whether or not we have a housing recession, Osceola, Osceola County is still one of the fastest-growing counties in the country. Why would we want to jack up our prices anymore and not be competitive? We already have zero lot lines and all this other competition, people are moving here in droves, why are we going to hack up, hike up the housing prices? I don't understand what is in it for us. That's my thoughts. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. First of all, would anyone else like to speak to this item? Would you like to speak to this?
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate the speaker's comments, I think there were maybe two that are worth, that I caught that I could respond to. One is, I think she mentioned, is it going to take revenue away from the city? And, and it's not. The, the utilities are going to get turned over to the city, just like they would in any other development, so that works just like any other development, and it will actually generate revenue and generate tax base by having the project there, and utilities revenues as well. In terms of the home prices, this is actually a mechanism to help keep the home prices competitive and deliver a, a high-quality project, so that's the intention.
Thank you very much. This time we'll entertain and discuss an inner motion by council. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. So, I say it every time the CDD comes up, I said it to you in the first meeting, is that I hear the comments from people, I know you think everyone understands what they're getting into when they buy a house, but it's a big stack of papers, and people, you know, sometimes they don't realize what they're getting into, and then they get the CDD bill and sometimes an HOA bill, so I feel like we need to look at it as the city is, you know, what are you bringing to the table so that we give you this opportunity to go to CDD? Because I feel like the benefit is really for the developer, because, you know, like I mentioned before, and this has happened to us before, is, it says $45 million of improvements, but those improvements are required for the developments you're creating. So it's not really like those are improvements for the community, a lot of that stuff is your reuse line, and your buried power lines, and your water lines, and your sewer. To me, like, that's not really a benefit to the community, which is what I said in the first reading, like, you really need to come back and show me, like, what you have. So, when I looked at the agenda package this time, I was, I had the same thought as Ms. Simone, I was like, but we required all this stuff previously, so really, how is that an enhancement? So, to me, I, I just don't feel like this meets the test for me to create a CDD, because it just basically lets the developer have great financing opportunities, and then put it back on to the, the person buying the home. I think, you know, for me, my bar is higher to get improvements for the community and to approve a CDD.
Thank you, Ms. Matheny. Would anyone else like to speak to this item or ask any questions? Do you have any other comment?
I don't list, you all have further questions for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I entertain either a motion, regard, or further comment regarding this item?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Askew, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Trace. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
No.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four one.
Thank you. Item number two, Madam Clerk?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2022-51, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, closing, vacating, and abandoning the Platte Right-of-Way and Platte Utility easement located east of Oakanue Creek Road and north of Pine Lakes Drive, specifically described in the body of this ordinance, providing for an effective date.
Good evening, Mayor.
Hang on, Josh. Mayor.
Councilwoman Matheny?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a conflict on this item, so I'll be abstaining from voting, this is my personal residence, and I've already turned a form in to the attorney's office with my conflict listed on it.
For the record, we will note that Councilwoman Matheny will not be voting on this item due to a conflict of interest.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Joshua DeVries, zoning manager. This case, ABN 21-0004, ordinance number 2251, is for the abandonment of approximately 0.039 acres of right-of-way and approximately 0.0482 acres of easement. It's located at 4306 Oak Court, and just for the record, the staff report did indicate initially 0.482 acres of easement, that was corrected in the presentation, also the ordinance. The background, the subject site is located at the east of Oakanue Creek Road and north of Pine Lake Drive. The applicant is requesting vacation of right-of-way along Oak Court and vacation of utility easement in the rear yard. The review of this proposal is in accordance with Land Development Code, resulting in no objections received from the City of St. Cloud, the immediate neighborhood, and/or adjacent area, the property owners immediately adjacent to the affected area right-of-way, or any utility providers or government agencies having possible need for the right-of-way. The request is consistent with a strategic infrastructure. All right, I apologize. So this, a request is consistent with the obstructive strategic plan goals of the City of St. Cloud, and the Development Review Committee has reviewed this on June 16th, and recommends approval of ordinance 2022-51. Staff is requesting city council approval of this ordinance, and is available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Does anyone in the audience that'd like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion under motion by council.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Askew, a second from the mayor. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero with Deputy Mayor Matheny claiming a conflict.
Thank you. Brings us to items three, four, and five.
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2022-13, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the City of St. Cloud approximately 1,499.80 acres identified as edch water located west of the Florida Turnpike and north and south of Kissimmee Park Road, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provision of Chart, Chapter 171.044, Florida Statutes. First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2022-14, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation of mixed use to approximately 1,499.80 acres identified as edch water, ED4, located west of Florida Turnpike and north and south of Kissimmee Park Road, providing for amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan filing of the Planning Commission, recommendation and proof of publication, applicability and effect, separability, copies on file, and effective date. First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2022-15, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a zoning district of mix, mixed use, compatible with mixed use, future land use designation change, adopted by ordinance 2022-14 for approximately 1,499.80 acres identified as edch water located west of Florida Turnpike and north and south of Kissimmee Park Road, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map filing the, filing of the Planning Commission, recommendation and proof of publication, separability, and effective date.
Good evening, council. Erin Stark, Transportation Manager. I'll be presenting the three items. The case numbers, ANX 210001, CPA 2100025, and ZMA 2100114. The property is approximately 1,499 acres in size, that includes some area of right-of-way that is also proposed to be annexed. The request is for annexation by encumbrance, the property has a signed water, wastewater service and annexation agreement on file from 2021, and we're implementing those conditions today with this proposed annexation. There's also a, and staff is recommending approval with conditions. The background for the annexation by encumbrance is contiguous and reasonably compact, it abuts the city limits on the eastern property boundary, and the existing county future land use is mixed use, and the existing county zoning is also mixed use. For the comprehensive plan amendment and zoning map amendment cases, the proposed future land use designation is the same in the city as it was in the county, mixed use, and the zoning is proposed to be mixed use as well in the city. The development is compatible with the surrounding area and has no impacts, adverse impacts on city facilities. On the left side of your screen is the current future land use map, and the right side is the zoning map, and you'll And you'll see that the county and city zoning and future land use designations are both represented there. The requests meet the strategic plan goals of growth management and infrastructure. And DRC and staff recommended approval with one condition on July 7th, 2022, which includes updating the title information. The legal description they provided was based on the parcels. There were seven parcels previously with three additional that were subject to the terms of the developer's agreement. That has since been platted into more parcels, and the legal description is still reflecting the old parcel configuration. So we're asking that that be updated with a complete title search prior to the final public hearing, just to be sure that the ordinances are updated with that final and accurate legal description. On July 19th, 2022, the Planning Commission recommended conditional approval of all three ordinances with the same condition. Your staff reports currently say that we have not received comments from the school board or from Osceola County. Since the time of publication of this agenda package, we have received school board comments and Osceola County comments. One of those comments from the school board, we've converted into a condition, condition number four on the next slide. So just want to clarify that, and we'll be providing those comments to the state as a part of the transmittal package and incorporating those into your items for the next public hearing. The conditional approval that we are recommending is the same condition recommended by DRC and Planning Commission, number one, with the updated title and legal description. Number two is a request of Osceola County, and we're in agreement that all prior conditions of approval from Osceola County development orders will be considered in review of subsequent development applications with the city. And just to clarify, there are, in your staff reports, a list of development approvals that this area that proposed for annexation have received already from Osceola County. We've received copies of all of their approval letters, which include conditions that are to be implemented at subsequent development approvals. So if the city were to annex the property, they've asked that we carry those conditions forward, and we're recommending a condition of this approval be that we will consider those conditions in our subsequent reviews. The third condition we're recommending is similar to some of those conditions on prior approvals these projects have received, which is that off-site traffic and stormwater designs will be addressed at the site development plan or subdivision construction plan phase and may require additional improvements beyond that which is shown on the approved PSP. So the PSP is looking internally at the site, but there may be some off-site improvements required, which will be determined consistent with the city's TIA policy at subsequent development review. And then the fourth condition is what was recommended by the school board. The language on your screen was what was included in their comments previously. We got some feedback from the property owners today, and we coordinated with the school district on an update to the condition you're seeing on your slides. So I just want to read into the record the changed recommended condition number four, which is, "The school board is requesting one dedicated, not donated, high school site from Edgewater East within the area proposed for annexation." So the condition on your slide mentions a high school site and a combination K-8 site. That K-8 site is outside of this area proposed for annexation, so not applicable to this project. And I, that is it for my presentation today. I know you all might have questions, and I'm available.
Thank you very much. Does the developer here would like to speak to this item?
There's several of them, but I don't know who would like to speak. I know we have someone here from MI Homes. We have five property owners within the area.
Okay.
Who's the applicant?
A developer, the applicant.
The applicant's the city.
Oh, that's right.
Because it's annexation by encumbrance.
Thank you.
Okay. No applicant? They will hear from the public. Tina Demastine?
You did too.
Thank you. I usually mess it up.
Hey there. My name is Tina Demastine. I'm with MI Homes. We are part of the annexation. We are neighborhood ED4. We're just a small piece of it that's a pretty substantial. I just kind of wanted to reiterate and put on the record that, and it's in the staff report, thank you very much for erring, the agreement provides for consideration for subsequent applications going through the review process, which can continue to be reviewed and processed by Osceola County until annexation. We're substantially, for our neighborhood, we're substantially under construction. We have approved subdivisions. We're in our second review of our plat. We're working on our amenity for construction. And then, you know, by the time this is annexed, we're going to be ready to be pulling building permits, so. But I just wanted to reiterate that we do have applications in process. We are a small portion of the development, but, you know, we want to hopefully keep, keep those flowing there and then be ready to go for building permits when we come into the city. The condition number three, I understand that this is a larger development, and it's condition number three about the off-site stormwater design. It doesn't, it's not a one-size-fits-all. It doesn't apply to all of the developments, because we are, where a one is substantially underway. So I just kind of wanted to make sure that we're all in agreement on that portion, that if you have your approved SDPs, you're under construction, you're not going to get these add-on, they're not going to be applicable to those properties, just for clarification. And I also wanted to just say that we appreciate that you guys are staffing up. We were a bit concerned coming into the city, being short-staffed, but we see that you've got some fabulous people, Dave Tomek, Josh, Erin, Dag Marie, so we're excited that you're bringing on staff. And, you know, with the Center Lake Ranch coming on with nearly 1,100 units, this large development coming on, we hope that you will continue, continue to staff up, because it's going to be a lot of projects and works coming forward for your team. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else associated with development that'd like to speak? Would anyone else from the audience like to speak to this item, these items? If not, we'll have discussion under motion by council. I ask that we first of all consider item number 2022-13. Are there any questions that council has? Councilmember Trace?
Thank you. So I wasn't in favor of the, what was this, water wastewater service annexation and development agreement back when it came in front of us, and I won't belabor those points from before, but one of the items in here was a tri-party agreement between the city, county, and the developer. What's the status of that for the transportation improvements?
Sure. The tri-party agreement would be necessary if, if annexed into the city, the developments make improvements above and beyond their own capacity needs or eligible for mobility fee credit. Those mobility fees would be paid to the city, and if those improvements are made on county roads, then we could offer to give that, those funds to the county for those county improvements. So, or for improvements to county facilities. So if an improvement is done to a county facility with city mobility fees, there would be a tri-party agreement involved. The steps that come before that are, the county is currently conducting the southeast area transportation study. They're calling it the SEETS study. That's underway now. I got feedback from the Transportation and Transit Director this morning, that that study will be completed in August, this month of 2022. He mentioned that that study will establish the lane configuration for framework streets and determine the proportionate share for each project within the area. So that analysis, I don't know, you've seen the county comprehensive plan and the concept plans that have come forward from the county. They classify framework streets as avenues or boulevards, but they don't necessarily determine if they have to be four lanes or two lanes, and that's what that analysis is determining. And then each project, when it goes to subdivision construction plan or site development plan, would then figure out what piece of that greater puzzle they would be responsible for. And then following that, we may enter into a tri-party agreement.
Might, not, shall?
Might.
Okay. I was envisioning when this came about, that tri-party agreement would be a part of the annexation, land use and zoning package with this, but...
I mean, there's a chance the county could just offer to build their own roads with their own money, but it's, you know, slim, so it's likely that there will be a tri-party agreement involved.
Okay, because my biggest issue with the annexation of this into the city is that the, the project itself cannot get impact fees over and above their total, impact fee credits over and above their total impact fees, right? So they can't get cash back, which is fine, but I think there should be a portion of this, of the impact fees, that should go into doing projects that aren't involved directly with this development, inside the bounds of the development. Because if you, if you take a step back, 10,000-foot look at this, there are impacts to facilities outside of the project.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Right? But we're not getting any funds to fund those if they get 100% impact fee credits for improvements within the project.
Right. And we hope that the impact fees are greater than what the costs of improvements within the developments are. The analysis, the SEETS study, is looking at the off-site impact. So they're examining the impact to Canoe Creek Road and other framework streets that are outside of these project limits to determine if improvements need to be made to those facilities as well. And then the proportionate share that these projects have in building those improvements will be also defined in that analysis. We've asked for an opportunity to ensure that local road connections, which will also be infected, are evaluated in that study, and their staff acknowledged an opportunity for city staff to do that. So we're going to weigh in and make sure that there aren't any missing local road connections that would carry some of these project trips, and we want to be sure those don't get overlooked. So...
Okay. Because this is the beginning of a large amount of development west of the turnpike, and we only have a certain number of, it's constrained, right? You can only have a certain number of overpasses, you can only have a certain number of intersections, and I think we're going to run into some bottleneck and challenges like a lot of us deal with trying to get on the turnpike in the morning and get, get home in the afternoon. So it seems like we're putting the cart before the horse for some of this if we don't have some of these agreements or some of that study in place. Another item, this, I think the county is going through and putting together a architectural code. I know we've been talking about it for three or four years, and we've gone, gone back and forth with some of the standards. Is this project, does it have to adhere to the county's code? Does it adhere to our architectural code? Is there...
The project, the building permits, the architectural standards are reviewed at building permit level, but those, if annexed into the city, the agreement clarifies that all building permits need to be pulled with the city. So if you choose to annex this and it goes through final public hearing for annexation, the building permits would come through the city and the city's standards would apply.
Okay. Because I think there will be, there will be other developments that strategically annex into the city to get out of some of the county's requirements, which is a different matter. I mean, this one, we already have the pre-annexation agreement, so it is what it is. I just, I'm worried about that happening, and we're having trouble keeping up with what we've got to begin with, let alone 16,000 residents coming into this development, which is about 30% of population in the entire city, just on one piece, let alone everything else that's coming on. So, I don't know, I won't belabor it anymore, but, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Urban?
Thank you. So just to be clear, this project is going to move forward with or without the city's annexation. Is that correct?
My understanding is they have the concept plan approvals, and they have the authority to have preliminary subdivision and site development plan approvals consistent with that. So yes.
Okay. So my line of thinking is that it's, as we realized in our, one of our previous workshops, is that this development is coming, whether we annex it or not, I would rather the city be in control and be able to collect the fees, so I would make a motion for approval.
Second. We have a motion for approval of ordinance number 2022-13. A motion from councilmember Urban, a second from councilmember Askew. We have a light. Ms. Matheny, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you. I agree with everything Mr. Trace said down there. You know, it's like if we have a certain pot of money, and then all the money gets expended internal to the development, then we've got all these problems on the outside. And I would like to see some more of that fleshed out as well before we agree. And this, this development, to me, is the same concerns I had about the Center Lake development was, it is a huge, huge, huge development. And I know the argument is always, well, you know, if we don't annex it, then we don't get the impact fees, and we don't get this, and we don't get that, but it's also, can we absorb this? I mean, it's such a huge development. I remember after Center Lake came through and I talked with Chief Gauntlet at the time, and he was telling me about the struggles that the City of Orlando had when, I think it was, like, Nona all got annexed in, and he was just saying, you know, like, he was telling me, like, all the challenges. I was like, I wish you would have got up and said those things, because you lived through it. But that's what scares me about this, is just the size of it, the pure size of it, and just, there's a lot of unknown details at this point. And we have all lived through the Tohoku agreements, you know, that it got approved in the county and then came into the city, and then we all, we kind of got stuck with a lot of things that maybe, you know, we didn't love and could have been done differently. So, so, you know, I have some reservations with this as well.
Any other? Councilmember Trace?
Thank you. And to me, this is one of those times where wherever we cross a, either artificial, like man-made boundary or a natural boundary, whether it be, you know, crossing East Lake Toho into something or crossing the turnpike for this, providing those services on the other side of the road costs a lot of money. So if we move forward with this and annexing this, it's like, well, you might as well do everything west of the turnpike till you hit Lake Toho. So this is just, in my personal opinion, I don't think it's, it's right to cross at this point. County does a good job providing services. The way the tax structure is set up between the city and the county, for the most part, you paid for double services on police and fire. So when you annex, you kind of pay for it twice, and then I'm sure this will have the CDD and all that as well. So, you know, it just, for me personally, I just don't think we should cross the turnpike on this side of town and just let the county maintain it.
Well, I'm going to make a comment. I certainly think we should annex it. They're going to be driving on our roads, using our parks, calling on our services, and it makes no sense that we don't have a say-so in this development and that we depend on the county to do that. So I'm going to ask for the clerk to please call the roll, please.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
No.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Nay.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries three two.
And can I ask for one point of clarity? The recommendation was for approval with conditions with the modified condition number four. Can we...
It'll move forward to, it'll move forward to final adoption with that in it.
Thank you.
This is just for a screen.
Awesome. That was certainly my understanding, but we'll certainly have another hearing coming up.
Okay.
That brings us to ordinance number 2022-14. Could I entertain a motion regarding the adoption of that item?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from councilmember Askew. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Nay.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
No.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries three two.
And then that brings us to ordinance number 2022-15. Do I have a motion regarding the adoption of that ordinance?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from councilmember Urban, a second councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Nay.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
No.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries three two.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to items number six, seven, and eight.
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2022-42, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the City of St. Cloud approximately 25.59 acres identified as Walker property, located south of Chissim Park Trail, west of South Narcousie Road, north of Old Oaks Trail, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provision of Chapter 171.044 Florida statutes. First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2022-43, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation LDR, Low Density Residential, to approximately 25.59 acres identified as Walker property, located south of Chissim Park Trail, west of South Narcousie Road, north of Old Oaks Trail, providing for amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan filing of the Planning Commission, recommendation and proof of publication, applicability and effect, separability, copies on file, and effective date. First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2022-44, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing for the zoning map amendment of the zoning map of the land development co- map of the land development code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately 25.59 acres identified as Walker property from R1 to RS-1C, urban settlement and rural settlement county, to R-1B, single-family dwelling city zoning designation with a LDR, Low Density Residential, future land use designation adopted by ordinance number 2022-43, generally located south of Chisholm Park Trail, west of South Narcouzi Road, north of Old Oak Trail, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map, filing of the Planning Commission, recommendation and proof of publication, suburbility and effective date.
Good evening. Dagmarie Segarra, Planning Manager. Tonight's request in front of you is the annexation comprehensive plan amendment and zoning map amendment of a property that is approximately 25.959 acres located at south of Chisholm Park Trail, west of Narcouzi Road, and north of Old Oak Trail. The requested annexation would not create an enclave. The property is contiguous and reasonably compact, above the city limits on the western property boundary. The existing future land use is low, low-density residential county, which allows eight dwelling units per acre, and existing zoning is R1 and RS-1C. The future land use map depict the existing future land uses of low-density residential consistent with the surrounding properties designation that are also low-density residential, and the zoning map depicts the existing zoning of R1 and RS-1C consistent with the surrounding properties zoning designations of RS-1C, R1 City, and O.R., Open Space Recreation City, and O.C., Agricultural Conservation County. The proposed future land use designation of city LDR under ordinance 2022-43 is consistent with the city comprehensive plan. And the proposed zoning designation of cities R1B under ordinance 2022-44 is not consistent with surrounding area and lot sizes. Proposed future development or R1B lots is not consistent with the surrounding area. The requests do not negatively impact the city's facilities. It means the strategic goal of growth management. The property is within the Narcouzi overlay, which was adopted by the city in May of 2015. The development of the property under the proposed R1B will not meet the intent of the Narcouzi community development intent and standards, which consist of traditional and rural state neighborhoods, mixed uses and heavily vegetated wetlands and forested areas. The preservation of natural resources are the core community value, which creates the open space framework that helps maintain the open rural feel of the area, or in character of the area. Through preservation enhancements and creativity of new developments, it will establish connections to existing neighborhoods and natural resources to reinforce the character of the area, which also features, the same feature in the Narcouzi community overlay. These are some, here are some core elements of the Narcouzi overlay to protect the character and preservation of the natural resources. As you can see, the priorities are to protect wildlife corridors and habitats, increase quality of living, sustainable ecosystem and tree preservation. Some of the mechanisms to achieve that is of strict transportation options, connected multi-use trail system, detached sidewalks and mobility options to support hikers, bicyclists and equestrian. Some of the elements that the overlay offer is the use of natural buffers and separators that are utilized to preserve the natural features. These natural features serve as a separator between compatible, incompatible developments and promotes land and similar densities. They also serve as connectors of neighborhoods using trails, street and green spaces. Our analysis focused on the size of the lots, the lots proposed since buffers are not a requirement between residential developments. Buffer should not justify the use of smaller lots. Buffer should be utilized for the intended purpose of the overlay design, which is not, which is to incorporate, incorporate public open space areas and trails. As you can see here, there is, here is a comparison, comparison between the two zoning. Staff recommendation under the analysis is R1, which allows a minimum size of 10,000 square feet, minimum lot width 75, and the dwelling size, minimum size will be 1,000 square feet. Under R1B, which is what the applicant is proposing, the minimum lot size is 7,500 square feet with a minimum lot width of 62.5, and it also have a minimum 1,000 square feet housing. The smaller, the smaller lot surrounding of the prop, the smaller lot of the surround of the property, surrounding the property is .67 acres, and the biggest approx, is approximately 4.5 acres. As you can see, the proposed lot size, this is not compatible with the surrounding property. Staff estimated that approximately a number of lots accounting for 20% of the project area being developed as open space and required infrastructure, under R1B, without exceeding the density, will be 89 lots, and under R1, without exceeding future land use density, will be 67 lots. Therefore, DRC reviewed this ordinance, ordinance for the annexation comprehensive plan and annexation on May 31, 2021. Planning Commission heard all three applications at their July 19 regular scheduled meeting and made the following recommendations. Approval of ordinance 2022-40-42. Approval of ordinance number 2022-43. And a tie vote on ordinance 2022-44. Tonight's council's requested action is to approve ordinance 2022-42 for the annexation, approve of ordinance 2022-43 for the comprehensive plan, and denial of ordinance 2022-44 for the zoning, R1B, requested zoning, R1B. This concludes, this concludes my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have. The applicant is also here to answer any questions.
Would the applicant like to speak?
Excuse me. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Councilmembers John Adams, RJ Whitten, and Assistant, 316 Church Street, Kissimmee. I do have a brief presentation that, Mayor, at your discretion, I could either give now or I could wait until a public comment, or at your discretion, I mean...
I'll do whatever you prefer.
I think that if we hear a public comment, because I know we had a lot of comment at the Planning Commission, I may be able to address some of those collectively with the presentation after I hear it.
Okay.
If that's convenient for you.
That would be acceptable.
Okay. I do want to state for the record, we are in agreement with staff for the annexation case, the comp plan amendment case, but we absolutely disagree with staff's presentation that we are not compliant with a Narcouzi community plan. We've done many projects in the Narcouzi community, and this absolutely is, and when I get to my presentation, I'll show you how we comply with that. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll see public comment. Sandy Simone? Is the clock working? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Sandy Simone, 5465 Hanson Road, St. Cloud, Florida. Well, I'm feeling a little better that John's on this project, but here are my questions. Will it adhere to the Narcouzi project? And I was really happy to see that they said, no, you need to make sure you do adhere to it. That's kind of what I want to know, and basically, I want to make sure there's birmingham along Narcouzi Road, should it touch Narcouzi Road, because we know in Osceola County, that has not always been the case, that things fall through the cracks, especially with new staff. I'd like a better clarification on why we're not doing the 67 lots versus the 76 lots that were on the paperwork that were received. So like I said, I'm feeling a little better that John's on board, but I'd like to see what the presentation is. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Betty Demke.
Betty Demke, 4776 Hidden Heights Trail, St. Cloud. Not going to talk about the normal things. I have a suggestion for you. With this property, it is not compatible with the surrounding area, but this is an excellent opportunity for the city to purchase this property and make an expansion of Chisholm Park, which is greatly needed. It would also, because of the layout, which one of the other speakers has on her map, would show you, would give a second ingress and egress to Chisholm Park. You know the development that's going on in our area, and we do not have the parks, the public parks that are needed for our children to go and to enjoy, or families. So I'm asking you, think outside the box. Not more rooftops, not more tax revenue, I know that. Think about quality of life and what you would be offering to the entire community in the Highway 15 corridor. It is drastically needed. Many of the residents, well, actually, all of the residents that are abutting this property have offered to buy it from the Walkers to preserve it as a natural habitat, as it is. I don't know where that consideration went, but it would still be a lot better than more houses on such a short space. None of us here tonight, speaking of this, are against the annexation. When I first heard about it, I thought, oh, that's not contentious, until I realized it backed up to Chisholm Park. And then I thought, this is an excellent opportunity for you, as a city council, to do something for our community out there that has been drastically neglected. You can use grants, just like you did with Hastings Grants, so it's not a taxpayer. Think about it before you go any further with approving this rezoning.
Thank you, Ms. Demke. Jackie Frigioni? Did I say that right? You can correct me when you get up here, okay?
Can I give her something to put on the overhead?
Yes, please.
Can we flip it?
Good evening, Mayor Blackwell and council members. I'm Jackie Frigioni, and I live at 4872 Chisholm Park Trail. We are here tonight concerning the Walker property. For the record, the Walker property is actually only 20.65 acres. The other five acres are not owned by Mr. Walker. Our concerns are developing this property in a way that is not compatible with the existing homesites and the preservation guidelines to maintain the open rural setting of Chisholm Park. Allowing future land use of an LDR, which is under your code, four homes per acre, according to the city's land code development, the builder home dynamics, is wanting to build homes with an LDR lot size of 62.5 feet. This is not in any way compatible with all of the existing homes in the Chisholm Park area, Albany Ave or Runnymede Oaks. This area of homes range from five acres to one acres to half-acre parcels. These were built 20 to 35 years ago. We are asking for any future land use to complement the existing homes in the neighborhoods. Anything less would have an extreme negative impact on our homes in that area and the preservation of the rural natural settings. Home square foot size in half-acre lots are the largest demand right now demographically from the realtors in that area. More people are wanting the larger acre lots and the larger homes as far as square footage. The areas of Lake AJ, Majestic Oaks, Waterside Vista, Hammock Point, East Lake Reserve, Chisholm Park, and Runnymede Oaks are just a few of the half-acre homesites that created the large demand for the rural homesites in the Narcouzi area. We are asking for the continuation of this, especially in the Chisholm Park neighborhood. Back in 2011, we all, as a community, came together to agree on how our future land development of the Narcouzi area would be preserved and complement the already existing landowners, and control and preserve the natural resources, and attract new homeowners to the area. But we need an equal balance between the homes, the nature, the functional, natural, recreational trails, and the preservation of the rural homesites. In order to achieve this, of the Narcouzi community plan and make it come to life, we need you, our elected officials, and us, the citizens, to be in an adamant agreement on the following, to make our vision come true. We demand a better quality of homes, not quantity. We want a complementary balance between the homes, the natural barriers, the natural existing landscape, which add value to all of our homes, and a large demand right now in the real estate market for the larger home acreage lots and the homesites.
Need you to read fast, please.
Okay. This is a reasonable request considering what the negative impact would be on the park and the surrounding environment to the park. So that is why we are here tonight, and we are asking you guys to take into deep consideration everything that putting an LDR subdivision in this particular location would not only impact the neighborhood, but we feel it's going to impact the park.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brian Bennett.
And that drawing there shows you the property of Mr. Walker's and the tree property there, which is the property in discussion tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Brian Bennett. Please state your name and address.
Hi, my name's Brian Bennett. I'm at 1125 Albany Avenue, and I'm one of the homes that was abutted to the, the Walker property there. And I want to start by saying I love this community. We moved here about three years ago. We moved specifically to the Narcouzi area because it offered services and a rural setting that was, that was better for my family. I have a son that's mentally handicapped. We chose that property specifically because it had a more rural setting and a more rural feel. One of the things that we've run into in that neighborhood specifically is the road system going in and out of the park is, is underserved. We have a lot of issue with the students going out to the bus. They all have to be bussed off of, off of Narcouzi. And so in the morning, we have all of the students that come out of the Chisholm Park development in there, who have to walk down the, the middle of the road at 6:30 in the morning to, to get a bus out on Narcouzi. Right now, the bus service is woefully underserved by the, by the county, and the, the services that are in that neighborhood are just not, are just not equipped to be able to service additional homes, particularly if we were to put in high-density property that would be at the 62-foot lot density that was described. Again, we're really not opposed to annexation. We're not opposed to development in the neighborhood. We just want something that is consistent with the, with the lifestyle that we have in that neighborhood right now. It's, it's a beautiful little place. If you guys haven't been there, please come take a look at it. We're still an area that has dirt roads. You know, it's an unpaved road in front of my house. Again, I chose that specifically because it posed less danger to my son. If he gets out of the house, he doesn't have any fear, and he wanders off. So it's, it's definitely an area that we targeted based on the feel and the, the community values that were there. I'm good friends with everybody that lives on that street. Everybody is, is a really tight-knit community there, and we just, we just don't want to see it negatively changed by adding high-density homes into that neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Sandra Jennings.
Good evening. I'm Sandra Jennings, 1135 Albany Avenue.
Could you pull the mic over a little bit closer?
1135 Albany Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida. And if I could ask you to put the video back up, the one, the last one that was up a few minutes ago.
Is that over here?
I don't have access to it, sorry.
No, the map she showed.
The map that you were given.
It's a little bit easier to understand when you see the map where I'm coming from. I'm the... Yes. My property is the four and a half, it's a little bit more than four and a half, but it goes all the way out to Narcoucy Road. If you look at that video, that picture, over 50% of my property is in virgin trees. It's the only part that's been cleared was for the construction of the house. And I have no intentions of ever breaking up my property to put 15 or 20 houses on it. The lake is, we're just one block off of East Lake Toho and where the Chisholm Park Trail, Park is. And this property on the south side that's currently all in the trees, that is the property that we're talking about putting basically a city subdivision in. Now, the only access into this whole neighborhood is down Chisholm Park Trail. And it's a straight road that's approximately, approximately a half a mile long. And then you hit the dead end into the park. And since the city acquired that park from the county, they have improved it and improved the use of that park, using Little League baseball teams practice and play games at the park now. So it has increased the use, the city's use of that park a lot, bringing a lot more cars up and down Chisholm Trail. But there is no other access out of this area. So they're talking about putting a subdivision that puts another 60 to 80 houses funneling traffic back out onto Chisholm Trail. If, I mean, I love the idea of that being, that property being used to expand the use of the park. Because that would give, the access to the park could be expanded to have another access on the south side of the park, as well as the north side, which is the Chisholm Park Trail. So they could use that property. It has direct access out onto Narcoucy Road, which would be a perfect use for that property. And it would continue to have the property, you know, even though mine is, over 50% of my property is, it's still in natural woods, there's also some wetlands on the backside of my property underneath those trees. So I would, you know, I have no intention of ever taking out those trees, and I would love to see it, the park expanded, to be able to further use that property for the use of the city. And my other concern is funneling additional traffic out onto Narcoucy Road. Basically, Narcoucy Road is, it turns into a parking lot during rush hour traffic, morning, afternoon. There's no other access really into Orlando, except for Narcoucy Road, which goes north into Lake Nona. And I, just the last couple of days, I traveled north, and it was dead stop traffic just creeping along the whole way up into Orlando. Going south, same thing happens when you go south, because you run into 192 going east and west over the turnpike.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. You need to wrap it up, please.
Sir?
Thank you.
Okay. Anyways, I would prefer, really appreciate it if the commission considers the overall use of that property and the potential use of it.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that has requested to speak? If not... Mr. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, for the record, John Adams, RJ Whitten and Associates, 316 Church Street. Let me first address the compatibility issue. No, this project that we're proposing, and this zoning that we're proposing, is not compatible with existing development, because the existing development is non-conforming. We have a current land use of LDR, Low Density Residential, not High Density, Low Density Residential. We're asking for Low Density Residential. They have the same land use, Low Density Residential. In fact, their density is even higher than what we're proposing in the county. They have a minimum of three dwelling units per acre, up to eight. Now, being non-conforming doesn't mean they're non-compliant. They can stay there as long as they want with what they have. But the minute they trigger the definition of new definition, or new development in Osceola County's Land Development Code, they will be held to the same rules that we are in Low Density Residential. They have dirt roads. They have well and septic tanks. This development requires public utilities, requires the pavement of roads. Now, earlier, you heard staff say that we were non-compliant with the Narcoucy community plan. I take great exception with that. We are, the only thing that we're not compliant with, with the Narcoucy community plan, is we can't get to three dwelling units per acre, even with the R1B zoning that we've proposed. I provided some electronic files, and I believe you all received them. Now, I want to put up a couple different maps. But you are not being asked to approve these site plans tonight. They are subject to review by the city, and approval by the city, and a subsequent application. We believe they comply with your code, or I wouldn't be presenting them. But I do want to demonstrate how with the R1B, with a slightly smaller lot from what staff previously recommended of R1, it gives planners like us control to create some open spaces, to create some buffering, that we otherwise couldn't if we had larger lots of R1, and they were in someone's yard. So I'd like to put these exhibits up. And if you'd like, I can, if you'd like, I've got copies for everybody up there, if you want to see them. This is a proposed plan. And again, I want to be very clear, you're not being asked to approve this tonight, because it's subject to subsequent review and approval by the city. But this is the R1B lots. With R1B, we can create buffers, because of the property geometry and the geometry of the lots. They're slightly smaller than R1, but if you take a look at Albany Avenue, what we have done is, number one, paved Albany Avenue, but created side lots along Albany. We can create a linear buffer along Albany Avenue, across the street from some of our residents. We also have provided, over on our east appendage and south property line, buffers where we can preserve trees. We can preserve some of that vegetation. But in addition to that, you heard staff talk about trails. We have created a trail along Chisholm Park Road into Chisholm Park, a multi-purpose trail, whatever the city requires of us. We've created a trail down to our linear park, and we've created a trail around the pond at the southwest corner with a stub out to Chisholm Park. And at your discretion, you can provide connectivity through there, pedestrian, or even vehicular, if you chose. We've also stubbed out roads to our neighboring property owners that, if they ever do decide to redevelop. We have provided connectivity. Additionally, we've provided another access out onto Narcoucy Road, which would be certainly subject to permitting by Osceola County for driveway separations. But we've created open space there as well, to preserve some of the trees. This plan complies with the Narcoucy community plan. This plan complies with Low Density Residential in the county, except for this plan is only a 2.98 dwelling units per acre. I can't get to a three dwelling units per acre. This plan is 76 units, I believe it is, I don't have my glasses, not 89, like staff reported. This is all we can fit at R1B zoning. With the larger lot of R1 zoning, we don't have the opportunity, as planners, to create those buffers and that open space. I do want to just sort of create the vision of some of the buffers that we are proposing. That's what Albany Avenue would look like with the R1B zoning. We can create the berm in our linear park. We can create that buffer. Could you put the next one up, please? We can continue that berm and that linear park buffer all the way down Albany Avenue, across the street from our neighbors. Certainly, we have street trees. Now, we would introduce some parallel parking by our recreation area, which is south of our neighbors, across the street. And then go ahead. And we can create the buffer on the south property line, a significant buffer on the south property line. We can, where there is some vegetation, we can create the tree preservation and comply with your ordinance. And then the next slide. And that's the buffer along our north property line. Again, tree preservation of natural areas. That can be done if you give us planners the opportunity to help manage the open space with the slightly smaller lot with the RB1. The next one. This is an R1 that was previously recommended by staff. The lots are bigger, but again, because of the constraints we have of property boundaries, we still do have and meet the 20% minimum open space, but we cannot put the same significant buffers in. In fact, what you would be looking at across the street from Albany Avenue is front doors and garages. And if you can go to the next slide, please. This is what Albany Avenue would look like. We believe, as planners, that linear park and that berming across the street from our neighbors would be much more compatible, much more desirable, than these slightly larger lots. Go ahead, and the next one, please. You know, there, again, we still have our street trees, but that would be lots fronting Albany Avenue. We could not control that open space. All that extra open space that we did put in would be in the slightly larger lots, the bigger lots. Finally, there is no buffer on the north or south property line, because we don't have the geometry to create a buffer. So we would respectfully request that you approve our requested annexation, land use of Low Density Residential, and our zoning request of R1B. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
This time, we'll have discussion or motion by council. We have any discussion or questions from council? Now, we'll look at the annexation request, item number six, ordinance number 2022-42. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. I guess I want to ask council, seeing how staff is saying, you know, 42 and 43 approval, 44 denial. I mean, I personally don't like to move forward with, I mean, I don't know how the council's feeling. I don't like to go, okay, we're going to annex you in, but then we're going to like deny something. And I feel like we're kind of, I don't know, all or nothing, personally. I mean, I would want to get this application 44 into a place that the city council felt comfortable with before, you know? I don't know. I don't think it's fair, like, to annex you in, and then be like, we're not going to approve one part of it, but you're already annexed, and so now you have to deal with the city. Guess seeing how the other council members feel.
Mr. Brazeros?
Just reminding the council, this is first reading. So any action you take tonight will not be final. It won't be back in front of the city council until, when did they? Dagmarie, September 8th is when we're anticipating, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Trace?
Thank you. Mr. Adams, it's interesting you present between the R1B and the R1. I think that's what staff is requesting. I figured your presentation would have been, if this is in the county, the three, eight units an acre will be three-story townhomes. That's where I figured you'd have gone with that.
Well, when my client first contacted us, I was well aware that Chisholm Park was annexed to the city, and I am well aware of your JPA, your joint planning agreement. I advised my client, he doesn't have an option to process through the county until and unless the city refuses the annexation. Absolutely, he's going to the county if you all refuse the annexation. Absolutely. And yes, it is likely there'll be a few more units, because I'm required to do that to meet the three. But it's likely to meet the market demand that's already out there. It would be a mix of townhomes and single-family detached, and we'd probably be somewhere above five dwelling units per acre.
Yeah, and that's the big difference between the city's code, Conference of Plan, and Land Development Code, and then the county, so.
The county requires a minimum of three, and they go up to eight. You at the city in your Low Density Residential have a maximum of four. I can't fit four with the RB1 lots that we're requesting. I can fit just below three.
Question for staff. For any straight zoning that we've had come through, have we had anything of a lower density than the R1B? I mean, 90% of what we see is a PD, right?
Yeah, and most of them are less than the four dwelling units per acre. As recently as Live Oaks, I believe that, no, no, Live Oaks. Just keep my mind. But they're averaging between like 3.90 something to meeting the four. But the majority are not quite meeting the four dwelling units per acre.
Well, and I'm not even talking density as much as the part of the zoning code of the actual zoning district that we have. In the four years I've been here, I don't think I've seen any R1s, R1As, or really, R2s come through. We've had a couple R4s for townhomes, and then R1B is kind of what people select if they're going to go straight zoning.
I'm not quite follow, because, I mean, this request is because the annexation, and then so they have to adopt the city zoning and the city's comprehensive plan, future land use. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, well...
So I'm trying to make sure that I answer your question.
Most developments that have come through, come through as a PD. They negotiate their zoning, and they put the buffers in, and they essentially do this plan anyway, but it would be 40-foot lots instead of 62 and a half or 75-foot lots, or whatever.
Good evening, Melissa Dunklin, Community Development Director. That is correct. Most of the applications... Most of the applications that we receive that do go straight zoning do request R1B if they're in the low-density residential future land use category. Others that are requesting smaller lots will typically go PUD, or if they're in the mixed-use districts, they can have smaller lots.
Okay, because it, again, 95% of what we've seen has been PD.
Correct.
Okay, so I just, it's interesting to see a straight zoning request come through, and especially one that can actually meet, I think, the intent of that. Whether it meets the intent of the Narcusi overlay, I have to sit there and look through all that. I didn't go through that aspect of it, especially because there's not like a list of check all these boxes to meet the Narcusi overlay. It's a 50-page document that doesn't really get into some of the nitty-gritty detail like zoning documents typically do.
Right, yeah, I think staff's recommendation is based on the fact that we're looking for more of a transition from the larger lots to smaller lots rather than just jumping from a larger, like, half-acre to a less-than-quarter-acre lot. We wanted them to kind of transition it. And also, I know Ms. Matheny is very much a tree preservation council member, and there will be a lot of trees that will have to be removed for this development.
Okay, which city zoning districts abut the property?
The park abuts it right now. The rest is county, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, you need section one agricultural.
One agricultural.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Do we have any other comment?
Other than the renderings need to have little white vinyl fences everywhere, because everyone fences in their backyard, you're missing that.
Again, just for clarification, you're not being asked to approve those site plans tonight. We understand that they are subject to another review, but certainly since I presented them with the authority of my client, and they're a part of a public hearing, we certainly intend to be held to those same design standards should the R1B zoning be approved, and we certainly intend on submitting that, subject to review and approval. So I can make that commitment on the record, because I did make it part of the public record.
Councilmember Urban?
Yeah, thank you. I certainly do sympathize with a lot of the residents who spoke up today, but if I could just ask you a question, Mr. Adams. If you mentioned earlier that if this is not approved by the city, that it would move forward in the county with possible lower standards?
Well, I don't know if it's necessarily lower standards. I would define them as perhaps more urban standards, okay? I mean, we certainly are going to have to pave roads and put public water and public sewer in to the urban standards. Clearly, in the county, we would have a higher density than we're asking for in the city right now, okay? And my client is fine with that. But if it were to be denied, if we were to apply what your JPA allows for to the county, it would absolutely be a higher density and a different product mix.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you, I'm sorry, go back. I know that you had mentioned that we're not approving these layouts. If this was to move forward and you go through a layout, and I don't know the particulars of your site, but would it be possible to move the pond next to Albany to give additional buffering to the residents that front?
We certainly will have our engineer look at that, yes. Right now, we have a very preliminary stormwater management assessment, which you're familiar with.
If it's possible, that's just one thing I was thinking, to increase the buffering.
If we can embellish the buffering even more than what we've proposed, we certainly will. We, I sympathize, I empathize, excuse me, with our neighbors. That Narcusi Community Plan was approved, but it was not approved without the land use that the county adopted, which is a minimum of three, a maximum of eight, but they also do have a provision that those folks can stay there as long as they want, until they meet the definition of new development, then they've got to comply with all the new rules as well. Okay, but certainly, Councilor, Deputy Mayor, we will look to embellish the buffering as much as possible.
Yeah, maybe just flip the pond over. But I, I know, it is, it is a struggle, because, you know, like you said, if we deny it, you're going to get higher density coming your way, and I don't know, you know? I understand, I've been on this street, and it's a very nice street, so it's just, it's just a challenge, kind of.
Are you done? I certainly like what you have proposed, and I've always been impressed with the work that you've done. You seem to go the extra mile that, to me, is impressive. I certainly like all the buffering that, with, you know, the zoning that you're proposing could be incorporated. I certainly would like to see any kind of additional buffering that you could provide for, you know, your neighbors there to be incorporated, and you said that you would work on that. And are you wanting to speak again? Do you have anything else for us at this point, Mr. Adams?
No, I just want to acknowledge and thank you for your comments, but, you know, we've been in business here in Osceola County since 1984. We're not in business to upset people. We want to try to work with our neighbors, but we have rules to comply with, and that's where we are in this situation. I certainly understand the comments about enhanced buffering. We're empathetic to that. We will do whatever we possibly can to enhance that buffering.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Dag Marie?
Dag Marie Segar, Planning Manager. I just want to just bring the reminder that because, what John presented are conceptual drawings, and we're not approving any, anything on them. The only, and the code does not require any type of buffers between residential and residential. We, staff would need a tool to enforce this, whatever is being agreed tonight, or whatever is that the city council wishes to see when the subdivision plan gets submitted to staff. I believe that our code allows for conditions up to the deed and make some restrictions, but it's up to the board. I just want to make sure that we have the tools to enforce these things that we're discussing right now, because they are not requirement from the code.
Thank you. Councilmember Matheny?
I have a question for Dag Marie. So I'm, I'm not an expert on the Narcusi overlay either. I know it's a big, it's a big document that accompanies the area, but I'm going to ask you a hypothetical question. Like, if this, if it were to get denied and it went to the county, meeting the Narcusi overlay requirements, could they hit the density that's required in LDR?
So the density, as John mentioned, in the county is a minimum of three. We have, we don't have a minimum, we have a maximum of four, and they can go up to eight. They can accommodate up to eight dwelling units per acre, depending on the design that they are providing, as long as they meet those open space areas, you know, those other elements that are requirement, required by the Narcusi overlay. We feel that the fact that it's next to the park, it is essential to protect those areas and the future connections to the other, to the east, to the west side of Narcusi Road. So, and it's a bigger picture. Right now, we have three more developments on the east side of Narcusi Road, that they're all interconnected with Linear Road, Tyson Road, and it's all part of the master plant trail.
Okay, Melissa Dunklin, I just wanted to clarify or add to that just a little bit. So when Mr. Adams is referencing the density, that's not in the Narcusi overlay plan itself. It's the county's land use designation that requires that density. So the difference between the county and the city, we both do have the low-density residential land uses. However, in the county, I believe, if I'm remembering correctly, they have the LDR zoning, and I believe that's the only zoning that's compatible with their future land use of LDR. In the city, we have several zoning classifications that you can choose from that are compatible with our low-density residential land use. So what staff is proposing is that we have an alternative zoning to the one that Mr. Adams is proposing.
Yeah, I maybe didn't, maybe my question wasn't clear. I just mean, if you have all these requirements, right, and like the Narcusi overlay requires, which I'm not an expert on Narcusi, it requires a horse trail and a this and a that and the other, could you actually get this property, if you meet the Narcusi overlay and all the things that they need, as far as open space, buffering, whatever, could you actually get this property to an LDR in the county, is what I was asking, which maybe you can't answer? I'm just wondering, you know, if you lose half of the site, just trying to weigh the...
Right, I think that's all based on the design, because either way, you're going to have a minimum open space requirement that you're going to have to meet, and...
So they're just going to have to build a three-story building or something, right?
Mr. Adams, would you like to speak?
I'm sorry. Yes, absolutely, we can get the LDR and still meet the Narcusi community with the trails. We showed you how we incorporated trails with the buffer along the roadway, and Albany Avenue didn't require to have a berm and buffer. We introduced that, based on some of the comments we heard from our neighbors. Narcusi Road certainly would have the berming and buffering, which is required by the Narcusi Community Plan, but even if we needed to increase our open space, and that plan that I showed you was at 25%, you require 20. The city, or the county, I think, requires 15, but irrelevant. We could still meet our density by going to a smaller lot. Remember, your R1B that we're requesting is 62 and a half foot. We can go to 50, we can go to 40 in the county. We'd have to have rear-loaded access if it's anything less than 45, but we can go to smaller lots to meet that density and still meet all the requirements of the Narcusi Community Plan. It would just be a different product.
Thank you.
And one more thing I would like to add. The city, if this is developed within the city, would require them to build the extension of Chisholm Park Trail along Chisholm Park Trail Road, I believe it's, is the name of the roadway. So that's something that we would potentially lose if it develops in the county as well.
I'm going to let you have a minute.
Okay, thank you. Brian Bennett, I'm one of the two homes that would be impacted on Albany. There's only two of us. When we take a look at the development plots, again, we are not opposed to houses going in there, not at all. We know that it's going to grow in that neighborhood. What we're opposed to is sending all of the traffic in through Albany. If they could reroute that and have it go in through Chisholm Park Trail and go in through the access corridor that they've got getting out to Narcusi, and leave us alone on a dirt road back in there, have the houses face towards the inside of the development instead of us looking into garages and into people's front yards, it, we, you would have less resistance from the neighbors. Just a little bit, if we could try and accommodate the existing people there, rather than trying to put a sidewalk that goes through my front yard, which was in his, in his renderings, and completely disrupt my front, my home.
Mr. Adams?
Again, those site plans are not being approved tonight. They're subject to a review, but those site plans were prepared based on our knowledge of your code, our knowledge of the requirement to improve Albany Avenue to a paved section with sidewalks. If, at the time, we bring a site plan through, the city doesn't want a sidewalk on the east side of Albany, fine. If you want to leave it a dirt road, fine. I don't think that's what you want to do, and certainly the county would require us to pave all the roads. And we also showed you stubouts for future interconnectivity, which is a requirement of the urban growth boundary as well. So nothing that we showed you tonight is being asked to be approved, but I have committed on the record to bringing in a plan in significant or substantial compliance with the site plan that I showed you should the R1B be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Do we have any other questions from council? Councilmember Trace?
This is a question for staff. Some of this mentions those buffers, and you said that code doesn't require any buffers, regardless if it's the R1 or the R1B. How do we incorporate that into this? Or is it, or is the intent, when the second hearing of this comes up, we'll have a site plan to approve with it?
No, because, because it's a zoning, we're not, we can't really make, condition this zoning. The Land Development Code has a tool or a section that allows for conditions or restrictions to the deed, that we can, that you can make the motion and include those, and on the second reading, we can bring forward the, a draft of, but the applicant or the owner will have to agree to those conditions being imposed on the deed.
Thank you, Mr. Benzeris.
Dag Marie got right to the point I was going to clarify there. There's a restrictive zoning option within the Land Development Code that allows, which is the method we would probably use in this instance.
Okay, and that's, as long as you guys have enough information to know that that will be some requirements moving forward.
I have no problem, well, I have a client, okay? At the second reading, we will have prepared a draft deed restrictions, is that what we're talking about?
We'll have to work on it. I'd rather not speculate on what it's going to be right now.
Okay.
We'll work on it before, if it makes it past tonight.
We're absolutely happy to work with council and staff on proposing those restrictions.
Okay, and then for future applications, this is for staff, for future applications, is it, is it possible for us to conceptualize a land use, a land development code update to incorporate some compatibility type things? Because if this was a 100-acre piece of property, it would probably come through as a PD, it wouldn't come through as straight zoning, and we would want to put some compatibility items to this.
Yes, yes, so we have already started working on a task authorization for one of our continuing service contractors to work on our land development code update. That is something that we've been discussing internally, so that we would have some sort of threshold if you are next to a larger lot, or if your lot is smaller, it would, couldn't be like more than, I guess, like 80% smaller or something, kind of like the county.
Yeah, as long as we're working on something, I just want to make sure everyone knows the rules going into it, to where, you know, this, this wouldn't present townhomes right up against acre lots and that, so just making sure we have some sort of...
Right, yes, that is in our, in our work plan to incorporate into the land development code.
Perfect, thank you.
Do we have any other discussion that needs to be discussed? Then I'll go back to ordinance number 2022-42. Could I entertain a motion for the adoption of that item?
For first reading.
For the first reading. I make a motion for the adoption of item number 2022-42 for the annex of this property. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second from Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk, you please call the roll.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Council, Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Could I entertain a motion regarding item number, ordinance number 2022-43?
Motion approved.
Have a motion for Councilmember Trace, a second from the mayor. Madam Clerk, you please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Could I entertain a motion for the adoption of item number 2022-44, this first reading?
And just for clarity, this is for the R1B rezone?
Yes.
That's how it's been presented to you, yes.
Okay. And the applicant knows the issues we have with...
We'll have to work on them, we'll get them...
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure he... I just wanted to make sure he...
Yes, sir, we're committed to working with your staff in the second reading.
Thank you.
Okay.
I make a motion for the adoption of ordinance number 2022-44 with the condition that we discussed. Do I have a second?
With those conditions, I'll second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor, I mean, Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Adams. Brings us to item number nine.
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2022-45, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing for the zoning amendment of the zoning map of the Land Development Code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately 9.59 acres identified as Michigan Avenue 10 acres, from A agriculture to RE single-family dwelling to R-1B single-family dwelling zoning designation with a LDR, Low Density Residential Future Land Use designation, generally located west of Michigan Avenue, east of Indian Avenue, sorry, Indiana Avenue, north of Nolte Road, and south of Cody Allen Court, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication, subraibility, and effective date.
Good evening, Dagmarie Segarra, planning manager. The request in front of you is the rezoning of a property located in Michigan Avenue, located west of Michigan Avenue, east of Indiana Avenue, north of Nolte Road, south of Cody Island Court. The property is approximately 9.59 in acres. The future land use of the property is low-density residential, and the existing zoning is agricultural and RE single-family dwelling units. The proposed zoning is R-1B single-family dwelling unit. The development is compatible with the surrounding areas, and there is no adverse impacts on the city facilities. It meets the strategic goal of growth management. Staff reviewed this request on, on, before 6:10:22, and recommended approval. The Planning Commission heard it on July 19, and also recommended approval. It is requested of the City Council to approve ordinance 2022 for the rezoning of the property to R-1B. That concludes my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions. The applicant is here to answer any questions as well.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Don Huey with Askew Huey, 25 East 13th Street, St. Cloud. We agree with council's recommendation for approval. We're here to represent our client, and here to answer any questions.
Thank you. If you'll stand by. Daniel will have a comment from the public, Daniel Kirk.
Good evening, Daniel Kirk, 3601 Michigan Avenue, St. Cloud. I've lived on this Michigan Avenue for, since 1995, when it was a dead-end road, and I tell you what, I tried to get home, going past the schools, and it was gridlocked. I mean, there's just no planning for this road. You just keep putting subdivision after subdivision, you know, more and more and more houses down there. Can't get to my house. I went down Hickory Tree, same thing, blocked off by the schools. You can't get there. I got to go all the way around to Narcoussi Road and cut back on Nolte, just to get to my house. So I understand we're growing and everything, but if you look at the map, I guess it's pulled down a little bit, but my house is located on a property that most of the surrounding houses are .41 acres, or close to half an acre, and there's really nothing else like that that's being proposed. Just, I think the density is too much for this area. It's, right now, it's all pasture land and a little clapboard house sitting on that property. So you're going to go from potentially two people, or two families, on that property and the property behind it on Indiana, which is all, generally, that I can see is five-acre, maybe 10-acre tracks. And you're going to put, I'm not sure the number, but with that zoning, but it's going to be like 30-something houses right across the street. And I don't know, there's no septic down, I mean, excuse me, it's all septic down there. I don't know that there's a sewer line, so you're going to have to run that in. It's going to, you know, more traffic, more digging up. There's no sidewalk on that side of the street. It's culverts, I believe, or ditches on that side. So it's just further degradating our life, you know, that we've come to have in St. Cloud, and eventually, just going to, I don't see any other way than I'm just going to have to move away from this, because I can't, I can't get anywhere. And I just ask you to consider the residents that have been there, and, you know, it's own agricultural, and that's most of the lots all around there is agricultural. I know there's people around there who've got chickens and turkeys and such, and horses. So I just ask you to consider, you know, the people that live there, and not people that, you know, they're just coming in like a gold rush town to make money, and, you know, I don't, I don't know, I know it's approved, you're showing it's approval, but I wish you would reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk. Timothy Kraus.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Blackwell and City Council. I'm not a polished three-minute speaker, so I brought a letter I'd like to leave for the council. I live at 806 West New Nolte Road with my parents, Merle and Jean Kraus. We moved on to a five-acre tract there in 1973. As I understand, at this Michigan Avenue, 10 acres is four parcels, and our property borders three of those parcels. Growing up, the three parcels on Michigan Avenue did have a few houses, we knew that as Neff Lane. The western part, probably the western seven acres that go up to Indiana, has been unoccupied for 49 years. My dad has done the Osceola County Audubon Bird Count for years, and he really appreciates that it's become a native Florida habitat there. Just last week, fishing, he saw a deer looking at him. We, like the previous speaker, our neighbor said, we recognize developments happening. Just to the north of us, we have Skylake Estates, where hundreds of homes are coming in within a mile of our neighborhood. To the west, Canopy Reserve with 50 homes was built a few years ago. To the east, on Nolte Road, we got Old Hickory, Hitch Loop, and Estates of Southern Pines with hundreds of homes, all within one or two miles. Putting in 30 houses on this 10-acre tract would do two things, and I just want the council to be aware of this, as you're considering rezoning. It would disrupt native Florida habitat. I don't know if the council relies on any kind of environmental specialists to do that kind of study, but you can have the best landscapers in the world, but they can't replicate a natural habitat. And I just wonder if maybe a good environmental study would be worthwhile before it's destroyed. And secondly, much like the Chisholm Trail folks said, it would, it's different from these other developments I mentioned, in that it would be placed in the middle of an existing neighborhood that is largely rural in character. And with so many other developments going on, I just wonder how much vision is going on, and really, you're the, you're the only ones in a position to provide some steering of the train. Don't know you can put the brakes on the train, but in any case, our family, we're really fortunate. Our parents, my parents, are in their 90s, they're still able to enjoy our five acres. And we just hope you have good planning and good information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. Does anyone else in the audience that wants to speak to this item? Not with the applicant like to address any of those issues?
Again, Don Huey with Askew Huey, 25 East 13th Street. As we heard today earlier from Mr. Adams, we do empathize with the neighbors. We also have a fine line of the LDC that we have to adhere to as well. These properties are currently, have a future land use of low-density residential, which is what we're asking for. To answer a couple of the questions, the LDC does require connectivity, so the proposed idea right now is that the roadway would connect Michigan Avenue to Indiana. Also, we have had extensive conversations with the utility department here, and sanitary sewer would be included along Michigan Avenue, from this property north to the intersection of Michigan and Furtick ultimately, to give the central sewer, and that there's already water on Michigan Avenue that we would extend through the property as well.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion under a motion by council at this time? Councilmember Trace?
So this will provide connectivity between the two roads? Because sometimes we create more issues if we don't actually provide...
Yes, during the pre-op, it was discussed that the road needed to go from Michigan Avenue to Indiana.
Okay, and then sewer as well? That's good. Those were my first two concerns.
Well, sewer would be ultimately, you know, we haven't got that far with sewer yet. The main thing was just to get sewer to the property. Obviously, through the PSP stage and the engineering stage, those issues would be worked out with staff, and we're more than willing to do what needs to be done to help future connectivity, whether it's utilities or roadway.
Well, and is that our central water and sewer requirement of our Land Development Code for development of this property?
Yes.
Okay. And the traffic issue, I mean, to me, it's, yeah, I avoid that area and pretty much half a mile around it, anytime school lets out or starts up, because, yeah, it's just gridlock, and there's no, there's no connectivity. So us providing connectivity when things like this happen, regardless of what the zoning happens to be on this, is something that's desperately needed. And for Mr. Kraus's comment, I think we're just trying to keep the tracks getting laid in front of the train, because the train's coming regardless, and we're just trying to keep, keep the, keep the tracks laid in front of it before, before we get to it. So, you know, this is just one of those, someone assembled enough property to put something in down there that is kind of more than the acreage around it. It's interesting, the recommendation of approval on this, R-1B from staff on this, because the lots surrounding this are bigger than the lots on the item we just heard, so I, whatever. So that's my questions.
Any other question or comment?
I might add that we did also have extensive conversation with staff as it relates to the sewer main extension down Michigan Avenue, and our clients have agreed that that work would be done during the summer months, when school is not in session, so as to not interrupt school traffic buses or anything like that.
Thank you. Could I entertain a motion regarding ordinance number 2022-45?
Motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 2022-45?
Do I have a second? I'll make a second. We have a motion from Councilmember Trace, a second from the mayor. Madam Clerk, you please call the roll.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Brings us to items 10 and 11.
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2022-47, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation MDR, Medium Density Residential, to approximately 13.98 acres identified as Hickory Creek, located south of Highway 192, west of Old Hickory Tree Road, north of Nolte Road, east of Orange Avenue, providing for amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication, applicability, and effect, subraibility, copies on file, and effective date. First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2022-46, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing for the zoning amendment, for the zoning map of the Land Development Code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately 13.98 acres identified as Hickory Creek, from R-1B, single-family dwelling, to R-3 multifamily dwelling zoning designation with a MDR, Medium Density Residential, future land use designation adopted by ordinance number 2022-47, generally located south of Highway 192, west of Old Hickory Tree Road, north of Nolte Road, east of Orange Avenue, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication, subraibility, and effective date.
Good evening, Dagmarie Segarra, planner, planning manager. The request in front of you is for the rezoning and comprehensive plan amendments to a property located south of Highway 1, sorry, 192, west of Old Hickory Tree Road, north of Nolte Road, and east of Orange Avenue. The property is approximately 13.98 acres. The existing future land use of the property is low-density residential, and the existing zoning is R-1B, single-family dwelling. The proposed future land use is medium-density residential, and the proposed zoning is R-3 multifamily dwelling. The development is compatible with the surrounding areas, and it will be not adverse impacts into the city's facilities. As you can see, as depicted in the future land use map, the property is surrounded of, by, on the east side, by the mixed-use, by mixed-use development, and to the, to the north, by high-density, medium-density residential, I apologize, and to the east, by low-density, to the east and south, low-density residential. The zoning map depicts also that it is surrounded by mixed-use development and R-3, and, I forgot the zoning on their county, E-1A, RS-1C, R-3, mixed-use, and AC. The proposed amendments are meeting, they meet the strategic goal of growth management. Staff reviewed the recommend, the application of 6:22, and recommends approval. The Planning Commission heard this application since July 19, and also recommended approval. It is requested from City Council to approve ordinance 2022-47 for the future land use amendment, and ordinance 2022-46 for the zoning amendment. This concludes my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions. The applicant is here to also answer any questions.
Would the applicant like to speak?
Again, Don Huey with Askew Huey, 25 East 13th Street, St. Cloud. We agree with staff's recommendation for the comprehensive plan amendment and the zoning map amendment for these properties, and do agree that they are compatible with the surrounding areas to the north. There's a roadway to, immediately to the north, there's a roadway immediately to the east, and we have mixed-use in the Roan Bridge property to the west. Here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Would any of the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have questions, discussion, or motion by council. Councilmember Askew?
This concerns me of adding the multifamily here, and one of the reasons is, is if you've ever gone down that road, it's the same hot mess that Michigan's running into. Every time that the school's in session, you really can't go down that road, and there's only the one, other than Hickory Hollow, and you have the other one by Gary Road. Those seem like low-density residential. I just noticed that the one north of you is high-density residential. I'm guessing that was through the county. Is that, I don't remember that one at all. So I'm not a big fan of adding the more density in that particular area, unless you can change me otherwise. It just seems like it's, we're just adding another. You got your Roan Bridge coming online eventually, and then you have, if you go, you're not in super-high density, but medium-density, and then the one to north is high-density, and then you got Hickory Hollow right there, and Gary, it just seems like we're adding a big hot mess there, and we haven't really addressed truly how they're going to get out of Roan Bridge. out of Roan Bridge. We talked about going north on Orange Ave, but I'm not even sure where we're at with that either, so.
We'd certainly work with any transportation needs that need to be done in there. And obviously, a traffic study will be required.
Certainly.
For the submittal, for future submittals. We are also required to connect to the Roan Bridge development as well, just to help for connectivity, to give essentially residents another direction, if you will, for in and out.
Thank you.
Do we have any other discussion or questions? Do we have a motion regarding ordinance number 2022-47? This is first reading. Do we have a motion? No motion? Where do we land if we have no motion to decide?
Well, I think the applicant's entitled, if you don't want to move it forward, then it's, a motion to deny would be appropriate. And then, at least the applicant gets a final decision for tonight.
Councilmember Trace?
Thank you. I don't disagree with Mr. Askew's comments about this. For it to be a land use, land use change, I feel like you have to provide a little more information to justify the need for it. It's already got R1B, which is what we just had two different struggles with. And then, now it's going from R1B to something else. So, I figured, is there any better justification you can provide other than, please?
Well, our client, in looking at the zoning map and future land use map of the area, and knowing that the mixed-use just came in not too long ago for Roan Bridge, and it does transition into single-family as you cross over Old Hickory Tree, we felt that this was a good, kind of a transition spot. And it's one lot, one property at the corner, and it's 13, you know, 13.98 acres. So, we just thought it was a good transition area, transitional area, from the mixed-use to the west into the county portion that is now Hickory Hollow, a single-family residential detached.
Do we have a motion for approval or a motion for denial?
I make a motion to deny.
We have a motion from counsel, Ask You, for denial. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from councilmember Trace. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Do we need to have a denial on the next one or can?
Yeah, it doesn't happen, because the zoning amendment won't be compatible.
Okay, thank you. Brings us to items 12, 13, 14.
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2022-48, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the City of St. Cloud approximately 12.313 acres, identified as 5,700 Nova Road, located east of Nova Road, west of Pine Groves Road, north of Hunter's Ridge Boulevard, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provision of Chapter 171.044 Florida statutes. First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2022-49, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation industrial to approximately 12.313 acres, identified as 5,700 Nova Road, located east of Nova Road, west of Pine Grove Road, north of Hunter's Ridge Boulevard, providing for amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication, applicability and effect, suburbility, copies on file and effective date. First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2022-50, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing for the zoning amendment of the zoning map of the land development code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately 12.313 acres, identified as 5,700 Nova Road, from AC, Agricultural Development and Conservation County, to AI-2 Industrial Two-City zoning designation with an industrial future land use designation adopted by ordinance number 2022-49, generally located east of Nova Road, west of Pine Grove Road, north of Hunter's Ridge Boulevard, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication, applicability and effect, suburbility, copies on file and effective date.
Good evening. Dagmarie Segarra, planning manager. The first request in front of you is for ordinance 2022-48, is for the annexation of 12.313 acres, located off east of Nova Road, west of Pine Grove Road, north of Hunter's Ridge Boulevard. The property is contiguous and reasonable compact, and it abuts the city limits on the eastern property boundaries. The existing county future land use designation is low-density residential, and the existing county zoning is agricultural development and conservation. It meets the strategic plan goals of growth management. Staff reviewed this request by May 22, and recommended approval of ordinance 2022-48. The Planning Commission recommend, viewed this request on July 19, and also recommended approval. It is requested of the City Council approval of ordinance 2022-48 for the annexation of the property located at 57 Nova, 5700 Nova Road. The applicant has requested that the CPA ordinance number 2022-49, and the recent application or request, ordinance 2022-50, be postponed to a date certain of September 8. That was the same, staff recommends approval of this request. The Planning Commission also recommended approval request, and is requested of the City Council to approve the request to postpone this, the future land use amendment and the zoning amendment of this property to a certain date of September 8. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Is the applicant here?
Hello. John Porter, Ossio Engineering, 1003 Florida Avenue, St. Cloud. I'm representing the landowner. I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Will stand by. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to any of these items? If not, we'll have discussion or motion by counsel. Do we have any questions from counsel? Councilmember Trace?
Thank you. Thank you. So, annexation, we're holding off on the land use and zoning. On the zoning, I don't want to make specific comments about it, but an I-2 zoning has to be, have a very good request and backup for me to be fine with I-2 zoning with some of the uses we have. I don't think, I think we need to rework some of our use table and some of the uses that are allowed in certain zoning districts. Industrial is definitely one of them with some of the uses that are in there. So, I just want to make that general statement.
Do we have any other comment? Can I entertain a motion regarding ordinance number 2022-48 regarding annexation?
So moved.
We have a motion. I'll make a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Do we have any further discussion, or do I have a motion regarding ordinance number 2022-49?
So moved.
And that would be to table until September 8.
Is that your?
Sure.
Is there a motion?
Able to September 8.
Okay. Second.
So, I have a motion to table ordinance 2022-49 until September 8, a continuance. We had a motion from, help me again, who made the motion?
Me.
Me.
Trace, second.
Me made the motion.
Me.
Me, Matheny, and Trace made the second.
I figure it's the only girl up here that he figured out.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll regarding continuance?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Do you have a?
Motion to continue ordinance number 2022-50 to September 8.
Second.
We have a motion from councilmember Trace, the second, and councilmember Matheny for continuance to September 8. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to item number 15. Madam Clerk?
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2022-52, an ordinance of the City of St. Cloud, amending and restating the City of St. Cloud General Employees Retirement System, providing for codification, providing for suburbility of provisions, repelling all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
Mr. Sturgeon?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, if you recall, back in February, we were directed to integrate St. Cloud Utilities with Toho Water Authority. That agreement requires our employees to transition to Toho Water Authority and retain their pension rights. With that said, there's been a request to change the makeup of the pension board. And the, some of the pension employees had great concern about the way Toho presented the makeup of the board. So, I heard them loud and clear. I talked to the plan attorney. I talked to the chair of the pension board and the other attorneys involved. And we come up with the following that I think will protect our employees' rights. Currently, there are seven total members of the board, three residents appointed by the City Council, including one retiree, four elected by a majority of the general employees who are members and vote in the election. What we're proposing is three residents appointed by the City Council, including one retiree, four members of the system, again, three elected by general employees who are members of the system and vote in the election, and then one elected by Toho Water Authority employees that were previously St. Cloud employees who voted in the election. And then, once the census of the employees drops below 20, that seat would be arranged in a different manner. Correct?
Well, the, yes, that's correct. So, the four, at the point that the Toho Water transition employees would be below 20, then that fourth seat would be elected by all the members of the.
Of the pension.
And I just, and just to clarify, Mr. Sturgeon did a good job explaining this particular issue, but the intent of the ordinance, it was to change the plan to allow those transition employees to continue to maintain their retirement. So, what had to be done, and what the plan does, it creates a new class of participants in the plan or members of the plan. That class is actually going to be Toho employees, but they'll be part of the city plan. And then Toho will be contributing the employer matching, the employer cost towards the retirement. That's the real purpose of the items that's before you.
Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. So, I'm sure all counsel received multiple emails with the same comments in them. And I know I talked to Mr. Manzares about it. So, this addressed like the first half of the email, and then I had talked to you about kind of what the second half of the email was. And then you said you were getting clarification on it, and so I don't know really.
Well, as I recall, that email, there was discussion regarding the Board of Trustees for the plan approving a cost of living increase, which the Board doesn't have the authority to do. That's entirely within the City Council's.
And then there's a whole early retirement with no defined penalty. There's a whole big section.
Those haven't been changed. None of that is being changed in this.
So, the only thing being changed in the ordinance is this?
The only thing that's being changed is creating, is creating a class, a new class, which is the authority class. That's being the, those are the employees that are currently the employees of the City of St. Cloud. So, when they transition, they're no longer be the employees of the city. So, they weren't eligible under the current plan to remain in the plan. So, the plan is creating a new class. They're no longer, they're not employees of the city, but they will be able to participate in the plan by virtue of these changes. And as part of that, it includes this issue related to the Board of Trustees of the plan. But again, the main purpose is to create this class so that those, those number of employees can maintain their retirement benefits when they go to Toho. The issue we ran into when we were dealing with this was, the Toho's plan is much different than the defined benefit plan that the city has. So, they, so if they just simply transitioned into that plan, they would lose a lot of the benefits they had. So, Toho couldn't just accept them into their retirement plan. And so, this was the method that they utilized when Kissimmee integrated into Toho. This is the same exact method that they used back then to do that, so that those employees could retain their benefits that they had when they were employees in the city.
So, it seemed like, just from the discussions that I had with people in the system, that these changes kind of happened in a vacuum, and then it was like, then they were just on the council. And so, we've gone back and rectified these issues with the pension board. Is that correct? Like, these have, I just, it just, from what I heard, it sounded like the changes just kind of happened and wasn't really.
You're correct, Deputy Mayor. In fact, I didn't even know of it until it showed up before the agenda review. And I've addressed that with the chair of the board. I'd just like a courtesy phone call or an email requesting this, so we can help the employees go through this and, you know, involve the council as little as possible. It is your sole decision. But again, I didn't even have an opportunity to review this. But once my office got involved, we resolved it within a couple hours.
Great.
And just more clar, this, these changes were drafted by the council to the board, the pension board. That's where this plan changes come from. They weren't drafted by my office, and they weren't, they were drafted by the law firm that represents the General Retirement Employees Board, that's who put these changes through, so.
It sounds like that council didn't coordinate anything with anyone.
I think the entire intent was to do a presentation, because this was first reading.
Yeah.
And, and just to, not by way of trying to deflect or make an excuse, but there's a lot of moving parts to completing this transition. And there's, and we've been trying to move these forward as quickly as we can. We brought this to a first reading to get it on the schedule to accommodate the council, the number of council meetings that are left before the transition, because this was among the more important issues to get done. So, it is before you on first reading, and I think we were working through it with the idea it would be presented to the General Employees Board, which it was on Tuesday, I believe, so that they could provide comments, but.
Yeah, I think just caused a lot more anxiety than needed, than it needed to. So, moving forward, let's try not to do that.
Do we have any other discussion by counsel? We have some public comment. Nadine Zilke?
Good evening. My name's Nadine Zilke. I'm the chairman of our General Pension Board for City of St. Cloud members. So, there was some confusion with, I think, the initial proposed ordinance. And then, once we received a copy of it and read it, which in itself was a daunting task to try to get a copy of that, there were some things in there that were of concern. And after reaching out to our plan attorney, he told us that he was hired by the City of St. Cloud to draft that ordinance. And so, he didn't have anything to provide us on that, and he wasn't working for us in that type of, you know, in that time. And so, that we needed to contact the city attorney for that, because he was drafting. And this was the back and forth, and that's why I think there was so much confusion in trying to get our hands on it. And then, when we did, as you guys know, we appreciate you taking the time to listen to our concerns and to the city manager for reaching out to us and coming to a resolution on it really quickly for Tuesday's meeting. So, we did propose these changes, he's right, in that with some addition, which you mentioned for the 20, that once it reaches 20 or below, then that final seat would be voted on by the majority of plan members combined of city employees and Toho employees that are left in the plan. And the only thing I see up there is where it says, three elected, under four members of the system at the bottom, three elected by general employees who are members of the system at the bottom, three elected by general employees who are members of the system and vote in the election. I assume it's the, for City of Saint Cloud, not the whole system. Because technically, by the, by saying the whole plan, it would be the Toho and Saint Cloud employees combined, right?
For which?
Um, under, where it says, four members of the system at the bottom, right? That first bullet says, three elected by general employees who are members of the system and vote in the election.
Right, and so after the way, and, and again, this was first reading with the understanding that we would work through it and get it finalized before that. So that's how it would be for, until such time as there are, let, until less than twenty members of the transfer employees remain in the plan.
I'm just trying to confirm that you mean by the three, that's three of the Saint Cloud plan, not combined Saint Cloud and Toho. Those are three voting members of the general pension.
Yes, that's what it says. That's what the language says. This isn't the, this is.
Right.
The language that's in the, in this, in this, this is just for demonstration purposes or summary purposes.
Right, because the other concern of, I think, why we came was, as of, by four-ish, the ordinance hadn't been updated for proposal, and that was the concern, but these were the recommendations from the.
And, and as we've done in the past, sometime when you, when these things are brought up at first reading, we work through it and do it. So the ordinance that's in your packet is not the ordinance that is being moved forward, and, and it hasn't officially, it hasn't been, and maybe it was updated about a couple hours ago, but I just, all I saw was a cut sheet showing the changes.
You have anything else?
I don't.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could just thank Mrs. Zilke for working with me. Like I said, we got this resolved pretty quick once we talked, so. Thank you, Mrs. Zilke.
Thank you. Lori Hand. Do you need to speak? Heather Welch. Are you happy now?
Oh, we want to hear you guys talk. You sat here all night.
Omar Lopez.
Thank you, again. Omar Lopez, please come to the mic.
Yes, sir. Speaking on behalf of Saint Cloud Professional Fire. I'm sorry.
Share your name, please.
Yes, Omar Lopez. Sorry about that. Omar Lopez, speaking on behalf of Saint Cloud Professional Firefighters, Local forty-one fifty-three. In reference to Veronica Millers. Is that what we're talking about? I'm sorry.
No, we're not talking about that.
We're not talking about that.
Oh, I apologize. That's, I already spoke earlier on.
Yes, you've already spoke, so if you're not speaking about.
This, oh, no, I'm sorry. I didn't.
Thank you. You may be seated.
I was like, you're part of the other pension. I don't know why you're talking on this one.
Do we have any other public comment regarding?
Yes.
A lot of items here.
Don't have your attention. Thank you. Do we have any other discussion regarding, any other public comment regarding ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash fifty-two? If not, we'll entertain a motion and/or discussion by council. Councilmember Trace.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. I think there might be a quorum of general plan members here. I do have one clarifying question, because, and I just have our, like, last time we appointed someone to the pension board sheet here, says, "Three of which shall be legal residents of the city." Is that something that needs to change?
No, that's what's in there.
Okay, so of the seven, just three need to be.
Yes, the three city council appointees have to be residents of the city.
Okay, so it was three of four, and now it has to be all three of the city council appointees?
Yes.
Okay. Is that something we might want to change?
It's entirely, entirely.
Okay, I just wanted to bring it up, because I, it was a little tidbit on here. But, no, I think we've got a workable plan. I, I'm in agreement with it, if the plan members feel like they're in agreement with it as well.
And just to follow, and one of those three appointees has to be a retiree.
Yeah, so it has to be a retiree that lives in the city.
Sir, yes.
Yeah, so that's a.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have motion from Councilmember Matheny, and a second for Councilmember Askew for the approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash fifty-two. This is first reading. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to item number sixteen.
Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero fifty R, a resolution of the city council of the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, amending resolution number twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-three R, which adopted the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget for the City of Saint Cloud.
Please, no talk outside, okay? Thank you. Leave quietly.
Finding the city manager has certified there are prior year fund balances and/or current revenues available in the budget for additional projects and programs in various funds, not included in the original twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget, requiring the budget to be increased to include said additional fundings in the various funds, making supplemental appropriations within the fund.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Wendy Colazo, Finance Director. As seated here, this is Budget Amendment Five for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. This is under section code two dash two twelve. This is to certify that the city manager has certified that funds are available to appropriate to such funds. This budget amendment does meet the strategic, the city's strategic plan goal for financial sustainability. I will walk through the various funds, as is typical, and if you have any questions, please stop me, and I will be more than happy to answer them to you, for you. In the general fund, we have a net increase of zero. We are decreasing city council contingency by five hundred and thirteen thousand nine hundred and sixty, and an increase to inter-fund transfers by the same amount to provide funding for the downtown project known as PW two thousand, the Downtown Revitalization Phase Two.
Question on that.
Councilmember Trace.
So we're increasing it by five hundred thousand. Were the streetlights not in there before, or we just?
There was cost. There was cost increase to it that were not fact, that came up later and are now being factored into that, so we're covering the increase in cost for that. Yes, sir.
Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. Do, are we buying the streetlights? Uh. Because typically, you lease those, like, you pay like a monthly payment.
Hi. Kevin Palablanier, Deputy, uh, Intro Public Works Director. Yes, we, we are purchasing them, because like I said, typically, there, there are two options, to be able to either do a long-term financing, basically, or to be able to have the, the capital, the capital cost paid upfront. And we have elected to be able to do the capital costs upfront, as opposed to financing the improvements.
It seems unusual. I mean, I don't know, I guess you've looked at the pros and cons. I mean, typically, that stuff is like a monthly payment to the utility versus purchasing it upfront.
Do you want to talk about the GASB requirements, when you're financing things? That, that has to do with some reporting requirements.
One, one of the reasons, Deputy Mayor, is because of GASB eighty-seven's requirement on leasing. It increases the amount that we have to monitor. There's certain requirements when you acquire the property, and it's just become a new requirement that we are now getting into compliance. We have this year to do. We are actually in the process of getting a software system to be able to track that, and so we're trying to minimize whatever we can pay as we go. We're going to try to do that, just because it's an extensive requirement for GASB eighty-seven, and we also have GASB ninety-seven coming up, so.
Okay.
It's, it's a strategy we're trying to do.
Do we have any other areas where we lease lights, or are they, we buy them in every situation?
We do not have leased lights, as far as I know at this point, and the last couple of years, I have not seen any that I know of.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to the one percent surcharge, surcharge fund. This is known as your one twenty fund, two hundred and eighty-five thousand nine hundred and fifty-two, an increase. We are using prior year fund balance of that amount to decrease contingency expenditures by seven hundred and seventeen thousand five two nine. This is decreasing building expenditures by two hundred and fifty-eight, and increasing machinery and equipment expenditures by two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, and then increasing inter-fund transfers to capital projects by one million, three thousand, four hundred and eighty-one. Also in the, and continuing on in the one percent, a decrease in the building expenditures by two hundred and fifty-eight thousand for roof impoggers, so this was, these projects will not be completed at this time. Increasing machinery and expenditures by seventy-five thousand to provide additional funding needed for the additional fire department rescue. Increase in machinery and equipment expenditures by one hundred thousand. This is providing additional funding needed for the bucket truck for the police department to service city cameras. We are also increasing machinery and equipment expenditures by eighty-three thousand to provide additional funding needing, needed, sorry, for public works, streets, and vehicles. All these increases go into intergovernmental transfers by one million, three hundred thousand four eighty-one, for the purposes of project number PS two one oh nine, the Fire Station thirty-three preemption. Two hundred and eighty-five thousand nine five two is due to that increased project cost, and then project IT twenty-two hundred, network security software, seven hundred and seventeen thousand, to pay off network equipment leases. The simplified version of that is, we're taking the money we're not using for certain projects, allocating to the ones that cost us a little bit more, and we're trying to pay off some leases, and that's your total one million, three hundred thousand four eighty-one move, readjusting allocations to give you the two hundred and eighty-five thousand nine hundred and fifty-two increase. That's the bottom line. Okay? All right, capital projects. All the stuff I just talked about, we got to put it somewhere, and we got to pay it. This is the Princess Fund, receiving all the monies in, so I could pay out for the projects. So we're increasing revenue by intergovernmental transfers. It's coming in, we're transferring it in, two million, four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four four one. What causes the reason for these transfers to happen? It's to go towards these expenditures, IT twenty-two hundred, security software. We're going to pay off those leases. Project PS twenty-one oh five, Fire Station Preemption, two eighty-five, the increase in cost there. Project twenty, uh, excuse me, PR twenty-two oh three, the Future Land, by nine hundred and fifty thousand, and project PW two hundred for Downtown Revitalization Phase Two, by five hundred and thirteen thousand nine sixteen. The Building Permit Fund, we are increasing by three hundred and sixty thousand. This is for revenue being used by, from the prior year fund balance, we're calling on that, and increasing it for professional services, for the expenditures, for the additional funding need for the project BM twenty-one hundred, City Hall. This is your atrium. In the Mortar Pool Fund, three hundred thousand, an increase. This is for internal parts, by a hundred and fifteen thousand, fifty thousand, excuse me, a hundred and fifty thousand, and for outside repairs, by another hundred and fifty thousand, giving us the whopping total of three hundred thousand, an increase. We're decreasing contingency expenditures by two hundred and eleven thousand eight five eight, and increasing work order clearing by five hundred and eleven thousand, eight fifty-eight. So we're increasing this fund, a hundred and fifty thousand, because repairs, internal parts and repairs. And then we're decreasing contingency, because that's what we're going to use in order to give them more money to be able to charge out all the work internally in the city. And then five hundred and eleven thousand eight five eight is for the additional citywide vehicle repair cost. Self-insurance and health fund, seven hundred thousand dollars, an increase. This is, again, we're calling on prior year fund balance, we're decreasing contingency expenditures by four six nine seven eighty, and increasing medical care expenditures by one million, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven eighty. This is for the increase of medical claims that we have received thus far. That is Budget Amendment Number Five. Staff is recommending approving, approval for Resolution twenty twenty-two zero five zero Romeo, and then city, re, oh, man, you know what?
You got so close.
Man, it's so close. I got to get one. But city council, we're requesting action for approval of this resolution of twenty twenty-two two zero five zero R. That is it for me.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have a discussion under motion by council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Ms. Colazo, for all of your work. Brings us to item number seventeen.
Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash one fifty-nine R, a resolution of the city council of the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, granting a conditional use to operate a mobile food dispensing vehicle, food truck, FMF D V, on a three, point three thirty-one acres parcel of land at seven eighteen thirteenth Street, Saint Cloud, Florida.
Good evening, councilmembers, mayor, and Joshua DeVries, zoning manager. Tonight, I'll present, be presenting three conditional use for mobile food dispensing vehicles, or MFDVs, also known as food trucks. You may remember earlier this year, the conditional use was, or, the council had adopted an ordinance listing MFDVs as a conditional use in the Highway Business Zoning District. This was in response to state legis, state legislating, state legislation, stating that a municipality, county, or other local government entity may not prohibit mobile food dispensing vehicles from operating within the entirety of the entity's jurisdiction. These are the first food trucks, or MFDVs, that have been through the conditional use process, utilizing the MFDV guide that was developed earlier this year. The first MFDV case on the agenda is Mr. Hotlank's food trucks, located at eight thirteen, or, sorry, seven eighteen thirteenth Street in Saint Cloud, Florida. The property is owned, highway business and future land use is commercial. Food trucks are only permissible in the Highway Business District through a conditional use. There are no adverse impacts to the cities, to city facilities. On the future land use map, we can observe that the future land use is commercial on north, south, east, and west, and the zoning is highway business, again, in all directions. The concept plan here shows the proposed location of where the MFDV would operate, which is outside of the required eight parking spaces for the site. There are eleven spaces provided on the site. This request meets the intent of the strategic goals for growth management and economic development. Staff has reviewed this request as a conditional use on May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. Staff recommends approval of Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash one fifty-nine R for conditional use based on the six factual matters identified in the Land Development Code. The recommendation of approval is consist, is, the recommendation of approval is conditional to comply with the city's mobile food dispensing guidelines provided to the applicant. On seven nineteen, twenty twenty-two, the planning commission recommended approval of Resolution twenty twenty-two dash one fifty-nine, conditional use. Therefore, staff recommends approval of Resolution twenty twenty-two dash one fifty-nine, based on meeting all six of the factual matters with the conditional, with the following conditions, one through nine, as well as the following conditions, ten, eleven, which have been added since the initial agenda upload. And condition number ten, eleven are exterior lighting of the MFDV shall be prohibited, and the number eleven, if at any time the MFDV creates a parking slash access problem on the property, the city manager or designated shall have the authority to suspend until issue is satisfactorily addressed or revoked, or revoke the conditional use approval. Staff is available for any questions that you may have.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item?
I don't know. I don't think the applicant is here for this one.
Is the applicant here, if she'd like to speak?
Hello, this is Orlando Francisco Ruiz, and he owns the property right next to the said property, which is seven nineteen thirteenth Street to the east of it. And so my name is Melinda Nollinger, and I'm here to help him kind of maneuver through, speaking. And he was concerned with the, how the approval of the food truck would affect his property, which is currently for sale, and also to how would they keep, like, I noticed that on the map, it also said that the, that the food truck would go to the left of the store. So is that something that's definitely a, a plan, which would affect him a la, less, because he was thinking it was going to go a butt to his property on, which is located at seven ten thirteenth Street? So he was concerned that people would be parking on his property. He has no issues with the food truck, of course, as long as, you know, they keep that into consideration, and also to the trash collection that happens when you have a food truck, you know, make sure that it doesn't accumulate on his property. So that's, that, those were his concerns on that.
Drizzle's concerned.
So to, to address that, yes, the, the concept plan that's, that's here to show the, the location there in, with the, the blue rectangle of where we would be, staff is proposing to approve, allow approval of this conditional use for the MFDV.
V.
Councilman Matheny.
Thank you. So I know this process has been, those are very good questions, by the way. Um, I, I know this process has been a little, I don't know, I, I use the word clunky. Um, but I, I, I have issues with some of these applications. This is the one, for me, that seems the most reasonable to move forward out of the three. Um, when we asked staff to go back and create this conditional use process, we said we wanna make sure there's adequate parking, and there's adequate circulation, and things like that. Um, in this particular case, and Josh, you said there was eleven provided, and I thought it was twelve. Is it eleven or twelve? Parking spaces.
There.
Well, in this particular case, you know, so one of the things I asked staff to do is I said, well, how many parking spaces does this business by itself need? And it was eight. So the gas station or whatever this, um, I don't know what we call it, like, 'cause I'm thinking it has gas pumps here, does it have gas pumps? But the gas station, um, it needs, per code, eight parking spaces, and how many were provided?
Thir.
Twelve?
Oh, yeah, I haven't, I know it's.
Well, they have an excess of, right? So like, let's say, let's say it's eleven, so the, I don't really like the way it's pa, it's shown here, 'cause it's taking two parking spaces, the way that it's shown. I don't know why it, it can't be like in a parking space, but I guess in the future ones you see, it's like, in this particular one, it's okay for me, 'cause it's like, okay, eight is required, eleven is provided, so then you're at like eight, and then you've got nine for the food truck, and then you've got two parking spaces for that. The remaining ones, that's not the case. Um, and so, you know, we deal with parking all the time up here, guys, we're like hounded about parking downtown, we're, you know, pinch-a-penny is coming in because you've got this mixed parking system, and there's not enough parking, and you don't know where things are gonna go. So to me, like, we really need to take into consideration the parking. In this particular instance, I'm, I'm okay moving it forward. I would prefer that the, the food truck only take one parking space instead of two. Um, but also in the conditions that are in the, the backup documents, I had a couple changes I wanted. Um, one would be, it's not a, it's not a conditional use forever, so right now it basically says it's a conditional use, um, and it's, unless they don't get a BTR, which, you know, getting a BTR is very easy. I would like it to have a conditional use where it has to come back within, um, Mr. Manzera said one year was too short, so say two years, to, to reevaluate it, to be like, is it working? Are we having complaints? Has the situation changed? Do we have a place to put the food trucks? You know, I think ultimately, for me, I would like to find an organized location to have the food trucks versus, you know, up and down one ninety-two, personally. Um, so I'd like it to have a, um, to come, to have to come back in two years for renewal, and the renewal doesn't mean they have to go back to the starting block and come all the way through the process again. It would be, you know, like, the city manager, I guess, brings an item to council to discuss. And then, um, I would like it to say that there's only one mobile food distributing, whatever your MF D V, 'cause they're allowing two that can rotate in and out. I would like it just to be one business, and not to have two rotating in and out. But I just wanna see how the other council feels about this. A lot of these issues are gonna become more obvious with the next two.
Do we have any other comment from council? Mr. Urban?
Yeah, I'm certainly good with, uh, reevaluating it every couple of years, because I agree, I would, eventually I'd like to find a place where all the food trucks can go, where they're not all scattered throughout the city like this, but, um, but I agree with that. With the, the two food trucks, from what I understood, they, they have to be there at separate times, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I, I'm okay with the, there being two, but at separate times, but that's just me.
Councilwoman Trace?
Um, I, I'd agree with that, too, because I think they'd go to events, and they might be somewhere for a weekend at a, um, at like a craft show or something, and then, you know, someone else can take their place for that weekend or whatever. So I'm, I'm fine with the BTR thing, as long as ones at a time. Um, I had a clarifying question on this one in particular, or I guess all of them. There was a distinction in our MF D V guide between hot dog carts essentially and MF D Vs, basically on size. Um, the other site plans had dimensions called out, this one doesn't. Is this one going to allow the, the larger thirty-foot vehicle?
Yes.
Okay, that's the intent of this one, is the bigger, bigger vehicle, and some vehicles are the smaller?
Yes.
Okay.
So where does that park, a thirty-foot vehicle?
So that, that's, that's why it's, from, from my understanding, it, it's not the full thirty-foot, that's, but that's why it, it does require it to park likewise? Yeah, that's why, why it takes up the two spaces, is it's a larger vehicle.
Okay.
Two spaces is twenty feet?
This, this thing was built, this gas station was built a long time ago, I don't know if the spaces are still coded.
And that's, I'm just wondering, like, wouldn't that take three spaces, if you were gonna park it sideways?
It's, I, I was just told that it's sixteen foot long.
Okay.
One six.
One, one six.
Okay, but the, this conditional use is with the property, so the other vehicle, if there's two BT, you know, BTRs could, could be up to thirty feet.
Which only exacerbates my parking problem.
Yeah.
So they, they would still have to meet all the conditions, which is that they can only take up two parking spaces at, at this location, so they would have to fit within those confines.
Councilwoman Matheny?
Thank you. So based on that, we have one parking space. You have one parking space available for the food truck. Right? If you're saying there's eleven.
So I was, I was, I was mistaken, that it, there are.
It's twelve. Okay, so there's two. Okay.
We have any other discussion? Mr. Manzera?
Thank you. Can you put your, the additional condition slide up again? Okay, so, if I missed it, I apologize. So where in the resolution does it say that they can only use two parking spaces?
It, it's, yeah, it, it requires that they, they need to follow the concept plan.
Okay, so, all right, that's exact, so that's, thank you. So, two suggestions to you, I, I think when you're doing a conditional use permit, and it has particular resolutions in place, if there's a problem, you're gonna go back to the resolution. So if we're gonna rely on a concept plan, the concept plan should actually be incorporated into the resolution. So if you're gonna move forward, I'd ask that you do that, so that there's no misunderstanding down the road about where, where the truck was supposed to be and all that, and that's, so the neighbors at least will know this is where the, the thing has to be by the concept plan, so that would be my first suggestion. Uh, if you wanna go with the suggestion that Deputy Mayor Matheny, then we certainly can offer some language to do that, uh, to address that, meaning I'd suggest it two years, only because that will give you a little bit more data to see how it's working out, and also it gives the applicant, who has gone through a, through a pretty rigorous process to get to this point, the ability to, to, to at least work for a little while. Uh, and of course, recognizing that this is a conditional use per, permit, then the city council always has the ability to revoke it if there's a problem with parking or any of those issues. You wouldn't even have to wait the two years if it came to that. Which brings me to the third thing, the eleven condition would have to, the, um, it'd have to be changed, because the way it's written, it says the city manager has the right to suspend, um, or revoke, the city manager doesn't have the avail, ability to revoke the conditional use permit. So that's only, that only falls with, the council can grant it, the council can revoke it, but that would have to be at a public meeting by the council, so you'd have to change that condition to remove the, city manager can suspend the permit, but he can't revoke it. They would have to come back to the council at that point.
Councilwoman Matheny?
Is there a way, I mean, it's a conditional use permit, right? Like, we can add whatever conditions we want?
As long as they're relative to the request, yes.
Yeah. So is there a way to put language in here that if we were able to sort out and find a place, a venue, to have the food trucks, you know, and instead of scattered along one ninety-two, if we found a place, that then these go away?
That's a little, uh, I, I, it, it, remember, the general purpose behind a conditional use permit is you're basically saying that this use works in this spot, right? You're, it's finite, it's identified, it's only, it only sets a precedent as to the one location you're looking at. If you're putting a condition that's tied to some other larger concept of basically doing it, that might impact the whole city, probably takes it outside of the conditional, outside of the conditional use permit. Now, you could.
Could we sunset it somehow, like?
Well, he, well, that was where I was, so you could, so what you would have to do, just general, for, for discussion purposes, if you were gonna go to, I think Mr. Urban mentioned it, or, and you mentioned it before, a locate, one loc, one location, then we would have to basically remove the conditional use permit authority that's in the, in the statute, in the code right now, right? So you'd basically remove the ability for someone to apply for a conditional use. Would that would mean that would, anybody, any entity that continues after that would be a non-conforming entity, 'cause it wouldn't be allowed? And then if you put the term that you're talking on it, potentially on it, then it would automatically go away?
Right.
When that term is up.
I, I got lost in that, I'm sorry.
Okay. So if you created an alternative location for all food trucks?
Okay.
For that to work, you would have to, we would have to bring back an ordinance that repealed the authority that you have already granted for individuals in the highway business to apply for the conditional use permit, 'cause that would be inconsistent with having one location. Right?
Right.
You follow me? So, once you did that, then anybody that received a conditional use permit would essentially be a non-conforming approval now, because the authorization code for conditional use permit wouldn't be in place anymore. Right? 'Cause you would have eliminated it to allow for the one location. At that point, and again, operating on the assumption that this, you are putting a time limit on these, that they have to be renewed every two years, they basically would have the balance of whatever the two-year period was at the time to continue to exist.
Yeah, I just, I'm nervous, because there's so many unknowns in the future, to have it be forever, you know? I mean, that, that's just my concern. I don't know if, I mean, I guess at two years, we could review it and decide if we're gonna renew it another two years, or do you have to renew it forever? Like, do you get one?
No, you, it, it, again, as you said earlier, this is a conditional use, so you can set any conditions that are reasonable. It is not unusual in conditional use permits to put a, a time limit on them, they can only exist for a period of time, um, and, uh, or if circumstances change, they can be brought back, those kinda things. So, uh, I think if you were, if, if, the, the, the issue you'd get into would be is if it can, if one of these came back two years later, and you had no data to say there were problems, or you hadn't offered another alternative, I think you'd be probably, you'd probably be required to renew it. But if you had issues with it, or you decided a different alternative was better for the city, then you wouldn't have to renew it at that time.
Okay.
But I think that, I do believe, I think the two, the, the, the provision, provision in there that, so that it's not in perpetuity, um, uh, is probably a good suggestion, that the good thing to have at this point, at least for now. You may find a couple of years down the road that it's all working perfectly, and you don't wanna change it.
Right.
Councilwoman Trace?
Thank you, and I imagine statute's gonna change every year about this, so we're gonna have to deal with it probably every year.
If you recall, we, Mr. Sturgeon and I tried, we spent a, a lot of time trying to get this, I still think the statute has a, has a, a huge glitch in it, that the legislature has not, has not saw fit to change.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we thought we were making some traction with it when this first came out, but it hasn't, it died, uh, and I think everybody's kinda put it off, um, but, um, I think it's gonna have to change to deal with this issue from a zoning perspective.
Okay. Um, I'm fine with ten, the revision to eleven, the two-year, um, timeframe, and then also adding the, um, site plan as part of the resolution. Is this something that, we would like to write that up and actually, it's a resolution, right? So it gets approved, if it's approved tonight, it's approved.
You can prove it with those conditions, and I think we can write it, they're not, we can write it up, so be consistent with that.
Okay.
So we would approve it with those, if you're gonna make, if you're gonna approve it those conditions, we can draft it up and get it.
And I heard your clicker, is there another?
You said ten to eleven, you mean eleven to twelve?
Sorry, ten and eleven, the items on the screen.
Ten and eleven, oh, okay. I just thought you were doing parking spaces.
Yeah, oh, no, no, sorry. Items ten, eleven, as modified, because, um, for what Mr. Manzera said about the city manager not being able to revoke the conditional use, the two-year time limit on the conditional use, and the site plan as a exhibit to the resolution.
Is that a motion?
Motion to approve. Resolution twenty-two-two one fifty-nine R, with the conditions as shown by staff, with the modification to condition number of eleven, um, adding a two-year time limitation to the conditional use, and adding the site plan, um, to be, uh, added to the resolution itself.
Second. We have a motion, the second, with the conditions that Mr. Trace has just outlined. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
And Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number eighteen.
Resolution number twenty-two-two dash one sixty R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, granting a conditional use to operate a mobile food dispensing vehicle, food truck MF D V on an point eight seven four acres parcel of land at seven nineteen thirteenth street, Saint Cloud, Florida.
Good evening, Joshua DeVries, zoning manager. This, this conditional use request is CNU twenty-one dash zero 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 one-two is for Caribbean Limers LLC, it's located at seven nineteen thirteenth street, Saint Cloud, Florida. Property is zoned highway business with a future land use of commercial. Uh, food trucks are only permissible in the highway businesses district through a conditional use, uh, there are no adverse impacts to city facilities. The zoning, or sorry, the future land use to the north, south, and east are commercial, and the, uh, future land use to the south, uh, across the street, is medium density residential. And the zoning, again, in the north, south, and east are highway business, and to the south, the zoning is R two, single and two-family dwelling. The MF D V shall be parked at least fifty feet, fifty feet from the residential zoning to the south, as shown in the next slide. So the concept plan shows the proposed location of where the MF D V would operate, which would be outside of the required three parking spaces for the site. There are three parking spaces provided along the west side of the property, and, and the, this request meets the growth management and economic development requirements, um, of the str, strategic plan goals. And staff has reviewed this request for conditional use on or before May twenty-seventh. Staff recommends approval of resolution twenty-two-two dash one sixty R for conditional use based on the six factual matters identified in the, in the land development code. The recommendation of approval is conditional use to comply with the city's mobile food dispensing vehicle guidelines provided to the applicant. On seven nineteen, twenty twenty-two, the planning commission recommended approval of resolution number twenty-two-two dash one sixty R for conditional use. And, uh, staff has reviewed this, and therefore recommends approval of resolution twenty-two-two dash one fifty-nine R based on the, meeting all six factual matters with the following conditions, one through ten, as well as the following condition, eleven, twelve, and thirteen, which have been added since upload. And, uh, number eleven is the, uh, exterior lighting of the MF D V shall be prohibited, or, yes, shall be prohibited. Number twelve, we will have to update that in, uh, based on the previous discussion, but if at any time the MF D V creates a parking slash access problem to the property, the city manager or designee shall have the authority to suspend until issue is satisfactorily, satisfactorily addressed, and that's where we would end it there. And then the condition number thirteen is the required, the three required and two additional parking spaces on site shall be striped. So correction to my, my earlier statement, there, there are five parking spaces available on site.
Thank you. Does anyone here would like to speak to this item in the audience? If not, then we'll, I think we have someone.
Yeah.
Just state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Curvis Tabardine, twenty-seven forty-two Parkfield Road, Saint Cloud. I'm the owner of the Caribbean Limers Future. I'm, I'm open for any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else? Then we'll have a discussion, a motion by council. Councilmember Matheny?
Uh, Josh, when I had my agenda review, what I was told was, the business, the brick and mortar business needed three parking spaces, and none of them, there was no striping out there at all.
Right.
So now we're saying there are three parking So, now, we're saying there are three parking spaces on the east side of the property? Or is there room for three spaces? I guess I'm confused.
So, this, this was, this property was built before site development plans were required. Based on billing permit information that we found, there are five parking spaces. They, on that billing permit, there weren't, there wasn't striping, it was just called out, as far as the parking spaces that were available. So, that's, that's where we're asking with this condition, that the property owner would stripe out those parking spaces.
Prior to operating the food truck?
We don't have that on there, but we can, if that's all the commission.
So, this is one of the sites that causes me problems? I mean, I'm sure you've all seen it when you drive by, that parking lot is old, and doesn't have designated parking spaces, and if, if there is room for five, which I'm shocked there is, but if there's room for five, who knows, because none of them are striped, the two additional parking spaces would be the food truck. So, you know, to me, it's like, we ask to make sure during the conditional use, that the access is there, that the parking is there, to move it forward. I told them during my agenda review, I didn't feel like this should be coming forward, because I don't feel like it met the intent of what we were trying to do through conditional use. But as you see, it's on, it's on the agenda, so no one agreed with me. But, you know, to me, I don't think this meets, it meets the criteria of what we were trying to do, to make sure there's adequate parking. I, I just want to reiterate, the parking, you know, that we deal with constantly, pinch a penny in downtown, I mean, it's like, here, we're gonna create an issue where, if the food truck is there, if there's five spaces, the food truck takes up two of them, so basically, now the business is in nonconformance. Like, one person comes to the food truck, well, then they don't have the appropriate amount of parking, for me. So, I, I don't think this should be moving forward, and I know that applicants have put a lot of time and energy and effort into it, and I would be fine refunding their application fee, I'm not gonna look at our finance person, because I know she's grimacing, but this, this one doesn't check the boxes for me.
Ms. Duncan.
Good evening, Melissa Duncan. I just wanted to clarify for the record, whenever we did have our briefing, we were using aerials to do the analysis. We, subsequent to your briefing, we went out to the site and did a site visit, and they do have three spaces that are currently striped, and we would ask for two more.
But again, that means there's, the truck, food truck's gonna take up those two.
No, on this site, they would not. Do you want to go to the, to the aerial, please? Okay, there, you can see, the, the food truck is not, oh, perfect, the food truck is not in a designated parking space, it's on the side. The two parking spaces, there are two up front that are handicapped, and then one parallel parking on the side of the building, or the rear, is it side or rear?
Two of them out, one in the rear.
Rear, sorry.
Two there, one there, and then-
There. We would ask to strike if they're not striped.
Thank you. I have to agree with Deputy Mayor Matheny, that those items need to be corrected before they can operate, essentially, so whether we want to continue this until we get the language right, and we get the striping done, or at least the striping shown on the site plan, to where then we can have something to look at, and staff can say, yes, you, you know, checked the box, to move forward. But yeah, I mean, we just gotta get it right. So, I guess it's up to us if we want to continue it, or just condition it to the point that it meets the requirements. One question in reviewing my MFDV guide is, there was a checkmark for distance combustible energy source. MFDV shall not be permitted to operate within five hundred feet of a radius of a natural gas or other combustible energy source. I believe this one has a propane tank filling on it, so I didn't know if that-
And gas tank?
Well, the gas, it didn't say ga, it, gas, it said natural gas, so I didn't know.
The fire department would be inspecting these.
Okay. But that was a requirement in your guys' checklist, so I didn't know if we're taking that out, or-
Yeah, right, because, so the fire department will review it, will both review the conditional use, so they, the, sorry, the BTRs, they do the fire inspection once they get the BTR. And so, if they don't meet that requirement, the fire department will notify them, and they shouldn't be able to get their BTR, or it would revoke their, sorry, not revoke, they would not be in compliance with their conditional use at that time, Mr. Manzares.
Well, that's not part of the conditional use, so, I, but respectfully, I, I think that, that's problematic, I think that's an issue that needs to be vetted out before the council can, can approve it. I know, in the general sense, it's not done that way, but, you know, conditional use permit is a authority to do, to use the property in the sense, and if you, so, if we did like you did on the last one, and, and you included this site plan as part of the conditional use that you, that you approve, and it turns out that that truck cannot be there because of its proximity to the tank, then they can't comply with an approved condition, and so we've got an inconsistency. So, I think that needs to be vetted out, or figured out, before you really go any further on this, unless we have an answer.
Yeah, the fire, the fire department did sign off on the conditional use, but I'll, I'll let Mr. Miller speak to that, if he would like. I think he's preparing information, so that he can come up here and speak to you all.
I am, sorry.
It's still Thursday.
It is, by only about an hour, I think, at this point. So, I was going over some notes, and reviewing some things. I believe it's supposed to be twenty-five feet, not five hundred feet, because five hundred feet would encompass crossing property lines, et cetera. I'll follow up with the fire marshal for clarity. I do not feel that five hundred feet is actually necessarily the right number, again, because you're talking about almost a tenth of a mile. It doesn't make any sense, so, I think there may be a little script or error there, that I'd like to follow up with the fire marshal on. Additionally, I think waiting till the BTR time is probably the wrong time to do it, it should be caught up front, because once that ship sailed, it's already sailed, so I'd like to do a little bit more work on this one.
Okay, I agree.
Counselor Rashke.
Valid points by counsel. I, I just visualize this thing, and then I just try to imagine, oh, food truck, slam on the brakes, jam to the right, park, where are you gonna park? You're just gonna, I, I feel like they're just, we're gonna have some sort of problem there. At least with the other one across the road, you got some space in between the two, you can cut in front of the gas stations and stuff, I don't know. I, I would just like to, if this comes up again, just, can you show where people are gonna park, and where the parking spots are? I know you told me where they are, but it's really hard to visualize, when you're trying to think of a person going and parking and getting food, and, and of course, I want the commercial business to be crazy successfuls. This is a tough one here.
Counselor Matheny.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's my whole issue, is the parking, like, that was our exercise to me, like, the whole goal of this process was to make sure parking, access, you don't want to maneuver around, this doesn't check the boxes for me. And it, there's even more issues in there, so, I mean, if they want to withdraw it, but it's, I'm, it's got too many issues for me, it doesn't satisfy what we were trying to do.
Any other discussion? Counselor Trace.
I'm fine continuing it, letting them work through those issues, to where they don't have to start over. I think we had to create an allowance to let them to continue, or whatever, a couple months ago, so, I'm fine continuing it, letting staff work through it with the applicant, and then if they can work through all the issues, then great.
So, is that a motion to continue it to-
What date, though?
Could you please make that into a motion?
Well, I need a date first.
Do what?
I need a date first.
September eighth is the next.
All right, so I'd like to, a motion to continue resolution twenty-two-two-one-sixty-R to September eighth.
Second. That's one-sixty-R, isn't it?
Yeah, whatever, something, yeah.
Something like that.
Okay. We have a motion for continuation to September the eighth, for resolution twenty-two-two-one-sixty-R. Do I have a second? Second, Counselor Rashke, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor member Trace.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
I'm gonna say yes, but it needs to meet the code, yes.
Counselor member Urban.
Aye.
Counselor member Askew.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero.
Brings us to item number nineteen.
Resolution number twenty-two-two-dash-one-ninety-one-R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, granting a conditional use to operate a mobile food dispensing vehicle, food truck, MFDV, on an eight-point-five-nineteen acres parcel of land at twenty-five-oh-one-thirteenth Street, Saint Cloud, Florida.
This, this conditional use request, CNU twenty-two-dash-zero-zero-zero-three, Flavors of Heaven, is located at twenty-five-zero-one-thirteenth Street, Saint Cloud, Florida. The property is zoned highway business, and the future land use is commercial. Food trucks are only permissible in the highway business district through a conditional use. There will be no adverse impacts on city facilities. On the future land use map, we can observe that commercial future land use is adjacent and contiguous to the north, south, east, and west of the property, and the zoning on all sides is highway business. This concept plan shows the proposed revised location for the MFDV, as requested by the planning commission on seven-nineteen, and noted in the staff report, the MFDV location was moved to parking spaces north of their original proposed location. This MFDV would operate outside of the required sixteen parking spaces. There are seventeen parking spaces provided on site. This meets the intent of the strategic plan goals, growth management and economic development. Staff has reviewed this request for conditional use on or before May twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-two. Staff recommends approval of resolution twenty-two-two-dash-one-nine-one-R for conditional use, based on the six factual matters identified in the land development code. The recommendation of approval is conditional to comply with the city's mobile food dispensing vehicle guidelines provided to the applicant. On seven-nineteen-twenty-twenty-two, the planning commission recommended approval of resolution twenty-two-two-dash-one-nine-one-R for conditional use, with the proposed revision that was, was presented here tonight. Therefore, staff recommends approval of resolution twenty-two-two-dash-one-nine-one-R, based on meeting all six of the factual matters, with the following conditions, one through nine, as well as the following conditions, ten through eleven, which have been added since the agenda upload. And condition number ten is exterior lighting on the MFDV shall be prohibited, and number eleven, similar to the previous two, we revised to read, if at any time MFDV creates a parking slash access problem on the property, the city manager or designee shall have the authority to suspend until issue is satisfactorily addressed. And staff is available for any questions that you may have.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item?
Will be the applicant.
Is the applicant here? Would you like to speak?
Hi, my name, my name is Giovanni Osorio, ten-three-five, Tony Circle.
That's Maris Sagata, planning manager, I'm gonna serve as a translator for Mr. Osorio. As I have mentioned in the previous meeting with planning commission, my biggest desire is to keep contributing to this city. We have tried to comply with everything that has been asked from us. And following the, the rules or regulations, and the things that we had discussed in previous meetings with staff.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak to this item?
Yes. Oh, it's okay.
Please state your name and address.
I'm Rosa Holloway, twenty-five-hundred-fourteenth Street. I own the building directly behind the gas station. I have some pictures.
Yeah.
Okay, number one, we had, we never had, I've owned this building for, what, probably twenty, twenty-five years, and I added on eighteen years ago. I live upstairs. On the other side, you know where the prescription unlimited is, they also have residential upstairs, so this is kind of a unique block right there. We had vandalism at my building, within the first two weeks after the food truck started. I'm not saying that the food truck people did that, but obviously, the clientele that walks there, we had landscaping pulled out, out of our landscaping. We had bricks thrown in our front yard, by, right by our driveway, by entrance door. Two weeks after the planning board meeting, I had a window broken that faces the trucks. I mean, the food truck is actually parked, or was parked, within like eight feet from our office windows, and you could hear the generator inside the building, okay? In the wintertime, a lot of times, they opened the windows, and you, they wouldn't be able to open the windows. I mean, you can hear the generator with the windows closed. This gas station also has a store, it has four-eight-hundred square feet of retail space right there, okay? They also have a computer store right there, that's been there for many, many years, okay? There's already not enough parking, because when the road was widened, they lost some of that frontage. It has a lot of gas pumps there. With a, with a big truck, you can't barely come in and out as it is. And, and here, we were using some more space. They need actually for their, for their trailer, because it's, you know, their food truck, they need two spaces just for that, plus a space for the vehicle that pulls it. And you can see it all on the, on the overhead. Now, this is my building behind it, and, and the gas station moved their, their air pump to that side, so, they're blocking, for anybody that want to get air in their tires, they're blocking that totally, okay? Plus, the truck was parked, in his park, right smack to the dumpster, next to the dumpster, with their door open. I would think that it's a health issue, too, if you're preparing food, and you have it sitting right next to a dumpster. There's already not enough parking space as it is, and with the large delivery trucks coming in, and they're not coming with little delivery trucks like they used to, they're coming with big old semis. We're having the semis parked on, on Tennessee Avenue, in the no parking zone, okay, from the Drifty Store. Sometimes, we have two and three semis parked right there. We have major, major issues right there, on the, by the traffic light, where people are coming in from one-ninety-two, and trying to come out on one-ninety-two. Did you wanna, yeah, yeah, put the next one up. Now, this, this picture was just taken, yeah, this was taken just a few days ago. As you can see, they, they have the truck, the, the, the extra food truck is actually in the driveway, the truck that pulls it is in the parking space, and then that white vehicle is also one of their vehicles. So, you're using up two parking spaces, plus the driveway, in order to get the food truck And this is from my window. You see where the dumpster is on the right side, and you see the pickup truck that pulls the trailer? See that, the trailer itself, the food truck, is not in the parking space, and is not two spaces over, like was recommended by the planning board. They did that for a couple of days, and then they went right back, because it would, it takes up even more space- because it would, it takes up even more space. Because they, well, you'll see another picture coming up. I'm cold, you guys got it freezing in here. I'm shivering. See how close this truck is to my property, to my building, to my office, where people try to work?
Okay, need to wrap it up, Ms.?
Yeah.
Ms. Rosa.
See how close it is? And right next to the dumpster. Go ahead. This is in the evening. A couple of weeks ago, they were until eleven thirty at night out there. See the delivery trucks and everything? There is no room for a food truck right there. See, this is when they moved over that, the two spaces like the planning board. But then it, it takes two parking spaces just for the truck alone, plus for their vehicle. That's good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. So, thank you for the photos, Ms. Holloway. I pass by this location pretty much every day. And I have to agree, this was another one that I didn't think should be moving forward to council. There's sixteen required parking spaces for this plaza, seventeen are provided. So if you just park the food truck, you're, you're, there's no spaces left, you know? And that's a very busy plaza. It's already crazy because the pumps are so close up to the, up to the road. And I didn't even think about the deliveries coming to the gas station. But to me, this one does not, it's, I mean, there's not enough parking spaces. This, that was the crux of this whole conditional use process was to look at parking, look at accessibility. And this one just doesn't check the boxes. And like I said, I'm fine with refunding the money to the applicant. You know, I know the application fees could be a lot. Again, I'm not gonna look at Ms. Colazo. But this, this one, I don't see how we could move this forward.
Any other comment from the council? Councilmember Trace.
I mean, I agree, this one has its challenges already out of the gate with issues with figuring out to comply with what, what the code is. And if this does get denied, I'm fine with them moving that fee to another application as well. Because didn't, wasn't there like a limitation of only a certain number that were in the queue were able to apply? So if they get, or is that, they can apply on any property? I remember there being a discussion about that like a year ago.
They were operating without, without.
Oh, so just the ones that were already in queue could operate still? Gotcha, okay.
Do we have any other discussion? Could I entertain a motion?
A motion to deny and return the application fee to the applicant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion for denial and returning the fee from Councilmember Matheny and a second from Councilmember Trace. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to item number one under council action.
Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash two oh five R. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, authorizing the city manager to enter into a service agreement between the City of Saint Cloud and Orlando Utilities Commission for Street Light Lighting Services relating to the downtown revi- revitalization revitalization project phase two and providing an effective date.
Kevin, excuse me, Kevin Felblinger, Interpol Public Works Director. Basically, we've already talked about this earlier today during Budget Amendment number five. This is for the streetlights for the downtown phase two revitalization project. Like I said, it's for the streetlights and the poles will match the poles that were installed during the first phase. And the cost of the poles and installation is five hundred twenty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have about this.
Councilmember Matheny.
Okay, Mr. Felblinger, don't kill me. But when we did New York Avenue, I was like, I want string lights, I want string lights, I want string lights, please make sure the light poles have string lights. And then it was like, we'll scab on a piece of metal and attach a string. I'm like, no, I've been saying I want streetlights. So then we got some, but now they're don't, they weren't rated to have string lights on them. So every hurricane season, we have to go do all this other stuff. Are these similar in look or are they exactly the same? And we're gonna have to have this SOP with pulling the string lights down and keeping track of the wind loads and that kinda stuff?
Then when the, the original phase is going through, we were told that these lights were, or these poles were set up and we had the foundation set up to be able to do this. As you've mentioned, the tune changed. We actually went to go start trying to, to put those up. But we have put them up, like I said, and like I said, short of the squirrels eating the, the wires, I said, that's the only thing that I'm really aware of that we've had major issues with on these. The poles have not been impacted. But like I said, the, the bases appear to be a little more substantial than we had on, on the original ones also. These new bases they're putting in. But like I said, but they are supposed to be able to be set up to allow for attachments to them.
Let's just double check that because that was very disappointing in the first phase for me. Because I was like, string lights, string lights, string lights. So, you know, I'm, I'm okay moving this forward, but let's just double check that we're not gonna get a surprise again.
Yes, ma'am.
We'll take care of that.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Not while for the discussion of motion by council, Councilmember Trace.
Will there be music?
I know, I wasn't gonna ask. Apparently we have peanut butter flavored light strings.
We, we are looking at doing Bluetooth speakers to be able to ride music down on, on the areas there. So that is something that I, I know we are looking into, yes, sir.
Okay. Was that a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny and a second from Councilmember Trace. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Thank you. Item number two.
Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash two fourteen R. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, authorizing an additional ten percent contingency increase to the previously established ten percent contingency approved by Council Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash two thirty-eight R on September nine, twenty twenty-one in regards to ITB number twenty twenty-one dash one forty-four, Saint Cloud City Hall Lobby Edition and providing an effective date.
Hi, Bob Deserich, Building Department Director here to answer any questions you may have.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have a discussion of motion by council, Councilmember Trace.
How's the addition going?
Slow, but it's progressing.
Okay. Do, do we have a estimated substantial completion date?
It's looking like the first of March now.
Okay. During, during the holiday season, are we able to get extra parking? If, if it's still gonna be constructed, will we be able to clear out some of the areas that we're staging?
I really can't speak to that because they, if they get the steel up, yes, they will probably be able to give some of that area up. But right now, they've got all their steel there in the lay down yard.
Okay. Yeah, I just want, wanna make sure we're looking into it to make sure that, if we can make that happen, that'd be great.
Yes.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number three.
Request City Council's approval of the Gardens at Lancaster Park, AKA Drew Liner PSP preliminary subdivision plan.
Joshua DeVries, zoning manager. This action item is for S U B twenty-one dash zero 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 two eight, Gardens at Lancaster, AKA Drew Liner PSP. The project is approximately twenty-two point nine seven acres north and west of Nova Road, east of Chatsworth Circle, and south of Ranch Road. The applicant is requesting approval of the, a preliminary subdivision plan to construct sixty-seven detached residential units on approximately twenty-two point nine seven acres of land. The property is associated with a zoning map amendment, ordinance twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one dash thirty-five, agricultural to R one B, single-family residential. S U B twenty-one dash zero 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 two eight is a revision to the previously approved subdivision, S U B twenty-one dash zero zero zero, zero six, to shift the location of Stormwater Pond and reduce the dwelling units from sixty-nine to sixty-seven. The minimum lot dimension of a hundred and twenty feet deep and sixty-two point five feet wide equates to a minimum lot area of seventy-five hundred square feet, which is consistent with the requirements for the R one B zoning district. This project meets the growth management strategic plan goals. And this is the most recent submittal of S U B twenty-one dash zero 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 two eight, Gardens at Lancaster, AKA Drew Liner PSP. I'm sorry. Is it the most recent one? Staff recommends approval of this preliminary subdivision plan, S U B twenty-one dash zero 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 two eight, Gardens at Lancaster Park, AKA Drew Liner PSP, subject to the conditions shown here and on the next slide. And staff is available for any questions that you may have.
Is the applicant here? Would he like to speak to this item? See them here. Nope. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Not, then we'll have a discussion of motion by council, Councilmember Matheny.
City Manager, is this any of the same people that were involved with the subdivision off of Nova that has the road that dipped down that we were having to put under drains and fix the drainage and dripping? It's not the same builder or developer engineer? It's not on the same cast of characters?
Sorry, I like that cast of characters. I don't believe so. Who, who's the, who's the develop, Josh?
Highland Homes.
Yeah, so no, that's Lennar. That's a different subdivision.
And what's the update on that fix?
It's not good. We're having more issues in there. We just had a meeting today, so. Well, but the issues.
I know, I'm just making sure it's not the same people.
No, it's not.
Because I wanna hold their feet to the fire if it is. Okay, that's it for me.
Councilmember Trace.
Thank you. My only question with this is, I know, I forget the lady's name now, the one that lives on the other side of this. We're adamant about that being a dead end road, the East West Road, Welsh Harpway. Is the gate we're having put in, is it, it's not just a chain going across the road, it's an actual like gate that you can tell that it's got reflectors on it of, don't, don't hit the gate?
There. So that, that is something that, that would be further reviewed at the subdivision construction plans.
Okay.
I think we should ask the fire chief to answer that question.
He was trying to leave. He was trying to leave out the back door.
Good evening, Fire Chief Jason Miller. Our attention would be, it would be a gate with emergency access for the fire department. Had a couple of different options that we'd look at. At this point, we're leaning towards a gate with an ox lock on it. But it would not be like a cable or a chain across the driveway. I won't make the same comment I made earlier because everybody kinda liked it, but it won't be one of those, it'll be a regular, probably a chain link fence.
Okay, it'll be something.
Something more, a lot more substantial than a cable guard or something like that.
Okay. I just, I don't wanna create a different safety issue with having something.
And that was my fear particularly for, you know, that area does have some property out there with people who like to use ATVs, UTVs and stuff like that. So I would hate to put just a cable across the road there.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any further discussion?
Motion approved.
Our motion, I'll make a second. Motion by Councilmember Trace, second by the mayor. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
No.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries four one.
Brings us to item number four.
Discussion impossible action regarding the appointment of a sitting member of the City Council as a non-voting ex-official member and two voting members to the Board of Supervisors at Toho Water Authority.
Mr. Ranzares.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as under the interlocal agreement regarding the transition to Toho, as you know, the, the count, the city is going to have two members, two voting members on the, on the board. And so that's what this item is for right now. The two members have to be citizens of the, of the city actually, or, and utility customers. And then the third, there's an ex-official position, which would be the, a sitting council member that serves as a non-voting member on the board. So tonight, we've been asked, because of issues related to Toho, Toho's board membership and the fact that they are actually, these two, two voting seats are actually being added to the board, so they're concerned about the quorum that might come now. Because we've got a bigger board, the quorum number is, is higher. So they've asked us to move forward with asking the council to approve, approve at least one of the two voting members to the board. And of course, approve a, a, a sitting council member to serve as ex-official. And that's what this is for tonight. So I think the, the council member one might be the, the easier one. So if you wanna, to who's gonna sit on that. I will point out to you that if either of the two council members that are coming off the council wish to serve the other seat, that could, that could be a possibility. However, their, the effective date of their appointment, when they could serve, would have to be after the election. But that is an option too.
Councilmember Urban.
I would, I would make a motion to appoint Dave Askew after he's done serving on the City Council as a board member for Toho.
I'll second that.
Sure.
And so, one final thing. So we, so what they've asked us to do is stagger the term. So there are two extra seats. I should have said, there's a seat six and a seat seven. So we just would need you to pick. Seat six is gonna have a two-year term, seat seven is gonna have a three-year term, and then they'll roll over into three-year terms, but there'll be staggered appointments. So we'd like you to pick a seat.
Okay, I have a motion for Dave Askew in a second for him to be appointed as a voting member of the board. We need to act on that first.
Yeah, you can, but would that be for the three-year term or the two-year term initially? Whoever made the motion, Mr. Urban?
Oh, would Mr. Askew prefer?
Yeah, he wants to serve two years. Can't wait. Sure, whatever, whatever you wanna put. Thank you. Thanks, sir.
Three-year term, is that what you said?
Three-year term for.
Okay, so that would be for seat seven.
For seat seven.
All right. So how many years have we sentenced him to? I mean, looks at him too. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
So then now we're looking at seat six. If you have a, and this would have to be obviously a citizen to be appointed.
Councilman Raskew.
Raylene Ketchum, I don't know if you guys know that lady.
Is she a citizen, is she a?
She doesn't live in the city.
Um, I don't know. Had a little chit chat.
I had talked to her too, but I'm not sure she lives inside the city limit.
I think she lives, I think they, they, I believe, I should know this, I apologize. They have to live in the utility service area.
Correct.
I'm sure she does.
That she would qualify for.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know if she gets a utility billing.
So we have a motion for Raylene Ketchum. I'll make that a second. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Now we need a city member from the City Council. Mr. Urban, are you feeling perky? Would you be willing to serve?
Sure, I would be honored to.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Mr. Urban as the sitting member from the City Council. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Raskew. Any discussion on that? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
We're done. Number five.
Discussion impossible action regarding the appointments of a council member to the Osceola Chamber of Commerce Board.
That's gonna be me and Mr. New Street. That's going to be me and Mr. New Street.
Mr. New Street, you want to speak to that?
Counsel, we actually joined the Osceola Chamber several months ago at the trustee level. I'll let Mr. New Street explain what that is, and requesting a council member be appointed as a trustee. Mr. New Street, thank you for staying awake.
Hey, it's me and all employees of the city. Thank you, John New Street, fourteen twenty-five East Vine Street, Kissimmee, Florida, CEO of the Kissimmee Osceola County Chamber of Commerce. We now call ourselves the Osceola Chamber. We have over seven hundred members, many of those at our, what we call our higher investor thresholds, which are our trustees, and so that's where you've come in, at our visionary trustee level, and so we appreciate that, look forward to that, and that gets you a dedicated seat on our Board of Trustees, and, which is also our Board of Directors at this time. So, there's a whole host of defined benefits. I can work with the manager and his designated staff to make sure you take advantage of those. Certainly, this sends a strong message, we feel, to the entire community that we do work together and support each other, and so appreciate that, and aside from the defined benefits, as you select this member, I'll reach out at a later time to walk them through board service and things of that sort directly with that member, if that's fair. I don't know if you want me to address anything else, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager?
No, that sounds good.
I could go on and on, but it's late.
Do we have any question? Do we have a volunteer?
I can do it. Most of my appointments, I don't know, I'm kind of the board killer, so.
True.
What's that mean? Hold on.
I was on Community Vision.
Now we're safe, thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for Deputy Mayor Matheny to serve on the board.
I'll make that a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
I'll pray for you now.
Got lots of questions, don't worry.
Mr. Menzares?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, at the last council meeting, we talked briefly, at least got some direction from the council about pursuing the new city manager position, or filling the city manager position after Mr. Sturgeon bails on us. The... So, we wanted to talk a little bit about that tonight. So, I'm going to pass, Bill, if you can pass that up, please. There's two issues we'd like some direction from, we, actually, one issue we'd like some direction, and one issue we just want to provide for informational purposes as the council moves forward with this process. The first one is going to be how, really, how quickly you want to move through the process. You've identified two candidates that you would like to consider. We were working with, given the circumstances, we believe in the timing, and the fact that I think most of the council members know the candidates involved, that it's very likely that we could have a potential city manager contract back before you at your September eighth meeting, if you're so inclined. To do that, we think, we were going to, we would suggest that the council have work towards having, in the immediate future, individual meetings with the individual, with the candidates, and then that we set a, the council meet in a special meeting to occur prior to the end of August, so that they can identify the candidate they wish for our office to negotiate with, to bring back the contract to be approved at the September eighth. If that's the schedule you'd want to keep, and that's, it's an aggressive schedule, but it's doable, and it would be, I think it would be beneficial to everybody, because it would allow for a very quick transition into a new city manager position. We can move at that pace if you want. That, again, is going to require that the city council commit to maybe meeting with the candidates in the next week to ten days, and then having a special meeting, we're going to suggest that if that were the case, that a special meeting could occur on August twenty-fifth, at which time the council could do, at that point, they could do a couple of things. They could bring the candidates back to have presentations in front of the entire council, or you simply could give direction to staff as to who, which candidate you want in our office to negotiate a final contract with. And then again, we'd have the contract back on your agenda for your September eighth, September eighth meeting. So, that's, again, that's the quickest path to get it, to get a move forward. We think it's doable, and we just wanted some direction about whether that was acceptable to the council as a whole, and we can certainly make it happen. I have talked to both of your candidates, and both of them are available in the next week to ten days to meet with you, and to meet on that schedule. So, that will be the first direction we're looking for this evening.
I'm good with that.
I'd like to see us move forward as quickly as possible, for sure.
Okay.
Was there any other discussion, other comments?
All right, so with that, we will set up individual, we'll work to set up individual through the city manager's office meetings with the two candidates. We'll have, we'll set us, have a short special meeting on August twenty-fifth to see if we can, the council can reach a decision as to which candidate they want. The second, I passed out for you a sheet that shows, and this is also going to be part of your discussion, I think, a sheet that was a survey that was done by the HR Department here in the city of thirteen cities, I believe, are on that list, well, fourteen, including Saint Cloud, but thirteen cities are on the list that show the salaries for city managers in comparable cities. I'll just point out to you that Saint Cloud is the second-largest city on this, and the largest, of course, is Kissimmee. So, most of the cities are smaller than Saint Cloud in terms of population, but it does give you an idea of what the, what the range of city manager salaries have grown to based on, for experienced city managers. The, I'll also let you know that there's two other, and the reason why we want to talk about, we think, based on what we've seen and the surveys we've seen, that frankly, you've gotten a really good deal on Mr. Sturgeon. So, and I think if you go into the marketplace now, when you're looking for a city manager with, you know, ten, eight to ten years of upper municipal management experience at the director level, or the assistant manager, or the manager level, the city is going to be looking at probably having a salary that's higher than what Mr. Sturgeon was making. Now, to give you some more validation on that, the current position of your city manager position is a grade four forty-two, which has a range of a minimum of one hundred and forty-six thousand to a maximum of two hundred and thirty-two thousand. Also, in the draft or pending survey study that the city has been, has been working on, I just lost my numbers on that, the current, one second. That study, that study shows that the range for the city manager position would be in the range of one hundred and forty-two at a minimum to two hundred and twenty-five at a maximum. So, I think that validates the range for this position. If you look at the matrix sheet that we handed out, it looks like, if you kind of worked through those on an average basis, looking at cities that are comparable, again, recognizing that all but one of those cities is smaller than Saint Cloud, it looks like you would be expecting, and I think this is kind of information you're looking for, expecting that the city manager position is probably going to be in the one ninety range, to be consistent with where you are now. Maybe a little higher, but if you were to go out into the open marketplace and address it, so we would, we would expect that's kind of where the position would be, and that's within the range of your, of the most recent salary review that's being done, as well as the current position, and consistent with the matrix that the Human Resources Department was put together. So, we wanted to give you that information, because we know that's important to you. It's just, you don't have to take any action on it, we just wanted to have a discussion and make sure you're aware of it. With that, based on the consensus, we'll work with the city manager's office to get the candidate scheduled to meet with you individually. We'll work on an August twenty-fifth special meeting for the council to meet and make a decision, or hopefully move forward if council, at that time, the council could decide they like the two candidates, or like one of the two candidates, or you could at that time decide that you don't want to go with either one of the candidates, but at least we'd be moving forward to getting it done as quick as possible, so.
Do we have a consensus on moving forward? Move forward.
All right, well, that's all I have on that. I have two other items, though. The first item is a thank you to the city council, whether most of you realize it or not, next week will be our firm's twenty-fifth anniversary of serving as city attorney, so we want to thank the city council for the support and the opportunity that we've had on behalf of my firm and myself personally. It's been, it's been a wonderful, rewarding experience, and look forward to a lot more years doing it, at least until I get my youngest out of college. So, we're looking at that. And then finally, of course, I need to thank Bill, as this is his last meeting. I've enjoyed sitting to the right of him at these meetings and spending a lot of time with him, working. He's done a great job for the city. I know you're all proud of him, and he's going to be greatly missed, and consider him to not only be a professional friend, but a personal friend, too.
That's the left of you.
I'm sitting, I meant to say I'm sitting to the right of him.
It's late.
That's what I need. Jeweler's correcting me. I'm sorry. Now it's time to be quiet. Thank you, Mayor, that's all I have.
Mr. Sturgeon?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just a few housekeeping items. First off, as you know, this year there will not be a city manager evaluation, so I wanted to know what process you wanted to use for the city attorney and the lobbyist. We use the same process as we did last year in the executive room.
Your time's up.
Thank you. The city manager only gets a twenty-second. So that's fine, and the lobbyists will be public, like always, they'll give a report, and you can evaluate them at that time, would that work?
I would say move forward.
That's fine.
Great. And then if you recall, at the CRA meeting, we talked about parking, and I reminded you we were in a CRA meeting, so Mr. Feldlinger had prepared some preliminary drawings for the parking area behind the hotel in several phases, and what I'm asking for is direction. One, I need to get with finances. We're looking at a couple of budget line items, say Veronica and I are looking at, see if we can cobble together some money for the next budget amendment to be able to start this project. As you know, we have a parking issue, which I always say is a good thing, but we need to solve it, and I think we brought these forward in the CRA meeting last year, and it was rejected, so I want to resurrect that. I think that the plans are sound, you know, like I said, I'm not an engineer, but move forward and see if we can get this project moving off the ground.
All you need is a consensus.
Just consensus to go ahead, come back with an engineer's estimate, and the, you know, what the budget looks like, and how we're going to pay for it, and start the project.
We have a well-known consensus on that.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, counsel, it is my last night to sit as your city manager on this dais. It's been an honor and a privilege, and I think the relationship we have with this council is built on trust from myself and from you. You've given me a lot of responsibility, and I came to work every day and took that responsibility very seriously, and I will until I leave here on September second. With that said, I thank each of you personally and professionally for the opportunity. I'd also like to thank my staff. I've led teams since I was eighteen years old, in the Air Force, Public Safety, this is the finest team I've ever led. They're true professionals who care about our citizens and care about each other, but there's, there's three people in this city that I can't run this city without, and that's Ms. Veronica Miller, my deputy city manager, who's always had the courage to tell me when I was wrong, and I was wrong a lot. She's been an incredible asset to me, and will be an asset for this city in the future. And then Mr. Menzares, a professional friend, colleague, and I always leave his office and I say this, that's why they call you counselor. He's talked me off the ledge numerous times, and talked to me, and taught me about government operations, and kept my head on straight when I needed to be. And lastly, my assistant, Amy Daly, who keeps me on schedule, makes sure I don't sit in meetings too long and don't miss appointments. So, again, thank you, Amy, professionally, and I think a lot about each of you every day, and I will miss each of you. Thank you.
Councilmember Matheny?
Well, I'm glad we gave you the longest meeting on your last one, so we got to enjoy it with you all these hours, but it's definitely, you know, sad that you're leaving, but I know you're going off to your old home of the fire world, and I think we'll be in good hands moving forward, and you've prepared your team, and you've got great directors and stuff, so I'm sad to see you go, but I get it, like, you know, everything comes to an end, right? I have a couple items. One, were we going to talk about the additional funds for the VFW in this meeting?
Well, we settled that in the CRA.
But I thought it had to come to city council, no?
No, we're good to go.
Okay, all right, good with that.
Moving forward.
Okay, cross that off the list. Mr. Trace mentioned it briefly on another item early, like, seven, eight days ago when we were in here, about the county architectural standards, so I understand they are on the cusp of being adopted, so I definitely think we need to grab those and adopt them as a quick win for us, you know, at least to get on the same page, and also to quit the, there'll be a little game playing going on, I'm sure, like, trying to avoid architectural standards. The other thing I wanted to bring up to staff is, I noticed that there is a mobile food truck in the parking lot of business that's within the city limits, but it's not annexed into the city, so I did talk to county staff today, like, hey, y'all are approving, like, food trucks in the middle of the city, and like, what are you doing, and what's your process, and they don't have any, so if I could ask our staff to reach out to the county to talk about stuff within the JPA. I sent a picture of it to Ms. Miller, and then she reminded me that they did not annex it, but it's basically just like an enclave in the middle of the city. And make sure you vote. I went and did it, it's very quick, and if you go to the Saint Cloud location on Seventeen Street, it's up at the front at the bus loop. It's not where it normally is, it's, you got to walk in up there, but it took me literally five minutes, I was the only person in there, so make sure you get out and vote.
Councilmember Urban?
I just, fortunately, I've worked with Mr. Sturgeon the least amount of time of anybody on the council here, but I've been involved in the city for a lot of his term, and I just want to say that I truly believe that he left the city in a better place than before he got here, and I'm thankful for that, and we're definitely going to miss you, Mr. Sturgeon, and wish you the best in your future journeys.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thanks. That's all.
Mr. Askew, Councilmember Askew?
Bill, you will be missed. Who are you going to talk to when you're on that ledge again? I mean, you're going to have the...
Damn, I still got his number.
Oh, okay. No, you, just seeing your transition from going from a great leader in the fire department to becoming a great leader for a city manager, that's, that's a big leap, and you will be missed. I mean, I could tell by the, when I came on here, you did not have a lot of great, happy staff, and now when you're walking the halls, or you're in city hall, it's just, it seems to be a nice place to work, and I think you created that, and your staff helped create that, so kudos to you and best of luck.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Councilmember Trace?
Thank you. Echo the same sentiments. Just looking back over the four years I've been here, the growth that you've had professionally, but then also the city, and how much better the machine is running, and just a lot more information that staff gets to put out, and just the job that everyone does, everyone was made better with you serving as the city manager, so.
Thank you, Mr. Trace. Thank you, Councilmember.
And I say ditto of everything that's been said about, all the accolades you're away. You certainly became the city manager, in my opinion, in a very difficult time, and your leadership skills, you know, rose to the occasion, and you've made a significant difference in our city, and certainly with our staff, and I appreciate your leadership, and I also appreciate your friendship.
Thank you, Mayor.
And we will continue to be friends, I'm sure, in the near future, and I'm sure we'll be calling on you for, for things in the near future, so thank you for your leadership and all that you've done.
Thank you, sir.
And our prayers are with you, and we wish you the best in your new venture. I'd also like to just say thank you to the Parks and Recreation staff and the event staff that did an amazing job at Hopkins Park. It was, they just went the extra mile this year with their backpack event. I love the way you guys were loving all those kids and making a difference. It was so neat seeing people from the police department, the fire department, and just about all departments. Our chief of police showed up and played some basketball and got real sweaty, and it was just really neat seeing all the interaction. I thought it was one of the best backpack, back-to-school events that the city has ever sponsored, and thank you, staff, for all of your work. You made a difference.[1767.23] With that, I have nothing else. We come to our Information Section and Reports Section. Tuesday, August 23rd, primary elections, and please vote. Polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday, September the 5th, city offices will be closed in observance of Labor Day, not Memorial Day. Wednesday, September the 7th, there will be a special city council meeting at 6:30 p.m. here at City Hall, Council Chambers. Thursday, September the 8th, there will be another wonderful city council meeting at 6:30 p.m. also here in Council Chambers. Thursday, September the 15th, City Council Workshop at 3:00 p.m. here at City Hall.